Councilor, Councilor's Committee of Finance will come to order. The clerk will call the robe.
Councilors Cadim, Dionne.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Ponti.
Here.
Raffoso.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
President Carrick.
Here. Just want to let everyone know that Councilor Cadim did reach out to me, said he's not feeling good, he's under the weather, he would like to make the meeting, but he just can't make it tonight, he's not feeling well. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We're going to begin, since it's input time, I don't believe there's anyone that signed up to speak before us, so that's item number one, we will move on to item number two, which is a continuation, the discussion we had from last week's meeting. We have members from the Park Department come down, we were down at the Park Department last time. Continue the discussion, I believe Councilor in seat number two had the floor. Could you all just please state your name and what department you went for the record, so we will know, the public at home will know who we're talking to. And please put the microphones close to you when you're speaking into the microphones, make it easy. You want to begin, Mr. Akins, would you just name an introduction?
Seth Akins, City Administrator.
Bridget Allman, City CFO.
Nancy Smith, Parks Director.
Al Olivera, City Operations Director.
Thank you. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dionne.
Good evening, everybody. If I may, I just want to backtrack just a tad with Mr. Olivera. At the last meeting, the overtime in your department was discussed, and you were explaining how you had to work outside of hours for certain projects, or whatever the case may be, because you had to have the, wherever the work was going to be done, had to be empty.
Correct.
So, and I believe that went up, I didn't look, shame on me, I think that went up 18,000 from last year to this year, was it 30,000 to 48,000?
Let me check.
Let me look, so I'm not, I'm going to make sure I'm not saying anything incorrect. Let's see.
Twenty-seven thousand, 200 to 40,000.
Twenty-seven to 40, alright, so it went up 13,000, okay.
What page is that, Mr. Olivera?
Page 138.
Thank you.
So, I thought about this over the weekend, and would it help you if instead of having that overtime account for those situations, would it make more sense to have a, say, 11 to 7 shift, so that they'd be four hours when people were working in the city, they'd be four hours after everybody vacated their offices, and they would get a shift differential for the second four hours, instead of overtime?
So, we don't have projects every day, we don't have projects every weekend, we have projects as needed. We did look into that, we thought that maybe that would be a viable way of doing things, but we don't use it every day, plus it's a collective bargaining issue, that we'd have to take some time and plan that accordingly, so that was the thought process along with that.
Okay, but there wasn't enough of an increase to increase that account by 13,000?
Correct. Now, if we didn't do the work in-house, we would have to perform that with a vendor, and by doing that, we'd have to do prevailing wage rates, and 13,000 would probably go in one project.
Statistically, yeah, could.
I do plan, I do plan on coming down at some point, and making a presentation on the amount of money that we've saved by doing things in-house. Currently, the budget did exceed only because of the projects that we did, but the shortage of staff, so we were able to use salary savings to do that.
And then my second question in backtracking, did you get a chance since last Wednesday for these capital items with the ARPA 47, for the vehicles and different equipment, to be able to identify how many of them we've actually procured, how many physically can be used or seen?
That would be, that would be the ARPA person coming down, but I did not, but I can, I can follow back up on that right now, I don't have that document, but I could.
Yeah, because I brought this up last week, and the City Administrator said it wasn't a fair question, give you a chance to look at it and give us the update.
So, if I recall, the question was actually what departments they went to, not whether it was procured or purchased?
Well, what, well, I think, yeah, okay, you're correct.
Respectfully, I think those are really different questions.
You're correct, but still, it would still be applicable as to what departments, then I guess the follow-up would be, are they here? I mean, I would assume, and I could be incorrect, I would assume Hustler mower replacement would be Parks Department, I would assume truck with a snowplow would be Streets and Highways, could be wrong.
Or various departments within, within City Operations, yes.
So, I believe Attorney Home actually sent out a revised list, did you not receive that?
As opposed to this one we got on Wednesday?
Yeah. Yeah, immediately after that meeting, actually, the next morning, I did ask her to do a revised list, I thought it was sent out.
She did send it out.
Okay.
She did.
I can just, I can tell you right now that what went to DCM is the front-end loader.
Okay, wait a minute, please, just so I can lock it. So, the front-end loader was DCM?
Yep.
Okay, and we have physical ownership of it?
We don't, that's procurement right now.
These are all in different levels of procurement and purchase, some things we have, some things we don't, and I didn't ask for the information, because that wasn't the question. Two brine systems, DCM, backhoe, heavy-duty trailer, tri-axle dump.
That's still DCM?
DCM.
Yeah, I'll change the category when I get to the end.
Okay, thank you.
Ford 550 dump, two of them, Ford 350 dump, two of them.
Those last two were, POs have been issued for those last two.
Two Explorer hybrids.
One house.
Audit.
Ford F-250 Super Duty, one, Ford F-250 Super Duty Crew Cab, one, a Clark Forklift, one, that's DCM. Parks, Park Dump Truck Crew Cab, Hustler mower replacement, two.
That's DCM also?
These are Parks.
Parks.
Oh, that's Parks, okay, I didn't hear you change the category, I'm sorry.
I did. One Kubota. This is Facilities, a Ventrac Rider. City Operations, battery-operated weed whackers with charger, three of them, battery-operated chainsaw with charger, two, battery-operated trimmer with charger, two, battery-operated backpack blower with charger, two. Cemeteries, Ford F-350 utility truck with snowplow and backhoe.
Okay, excellent.
Fire Department, area ladder truck.
Well, I know those aren't coming in for a year and a half to two years, because it's, it takes that long.
Correct.
For them to be, yeah.
There's still ARPA purchases, do you want me to keep going?
Yes, they are. No, I think I'm good on the others, because we're addressing Mr. Olivera's departments, so.
Okay.
I mean, the trolley is the trolley, I know, I remember the open government, the police cruisers, obviously, is the police department, so some of them are self-explanatory. Alrighty.
Oh, there's also, so we're in the process of looking at money that's been dispersed from ARPA, and hasn't been spent, either by outside agencies or internal, you know, more programmatic things, where there's an estimate as to what was going to be used, and they didn't use it all. There's been a significant amount, we've been able to claw back, but there's 205,000 of that, that the mayor has set aside for Parks projects, since we're talking about Parks in DCM and City Operations. It's not the full 300,000 that was originally, that would have taken care of the list that Director Smith talked about last week, but we're looking at about 205,000 in ARPA money to do some of those projects. Those decisions will be made between the mayor, and I imagine Director Smith and Director Olivera, in the next week, two weeks, at the very most, and started, because obviously we need to commit those funds forthwith. But from the list, we'll be able to commit 205,000. That's the ARPA expense that is not on the list that you got.
Yeah, that was just a recent, something that came up recently.
Yeah, the Attorney Home has been spending probably the last month looking at every project, every expense, every expenditure through ARPA, to determine if there's any leftovers there that should be clawed back and put towards an immediate and better use. And amongst what she's found, and I don't know the total number, the 205 is committed in the way that I just said.
And then we also had identified about $43,000 of some funds that were from capital projects from the last few, from, you know, a few years ago.
Yeah, the inactive projects?
Yes, and so, and Al's also working on some specs to then we'll have to reallocate that money.
Yeah, the inactive projects, I was going to bring that up, $44,103 and 23 cents.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so we don't.
So, again, that's money that was bonded, so we have to, you know, do that a different way.
Right, and it's going to go for like, and it came from Parks, so it can remain in Parks.
Yeah, but it still has to be like a like-kind, you know, project, so, yeah.
Okay, so, in light of some of the comments and statements, Mrs. Smith, could you kind of give us a brief overview of some of the projects that you felt were, okay, so, true transparency, full transparency, I emailed Mrs. Smith, I asked her, could she please send me her budget, the projects, her reasons for the projects, etc., so I have that here. But I would like her to kind of, so everybody else knows also, what some of the projects were that you felt were important, and we'll start with that.
Okay, well, there were several projects, some of them exceeded the $300,000, but much of the projects were rehab of the tennis basketball court, some playground installation. I did note that there were sidewalks and roadways, both throughout Kennedy and Lafayette Park, in addition to parking lot properties of Parks that needed repairs or lighting. So that, those were big projects, so I knew that they wouldn't be able to be put in our actual budget. I did get estimates for the crack filling per court, so it was broken down to the different courts. So some of them ran from $12,000 repairs to other courts that needed 40, you know, maybe $40,000 repairs, and depending on how we did those repairs, would be able to maybe stretch the dollar a little bit more. I also took into consideration, I had spoken with the building inspector about the Kennedy Park pool building, I thought that that should be demolished, or something done with it, if they're going to save it, they're going to save it, if they're going to, I recommended demolition, because that was my conversation with the, with the building inspector. So, it's, no one has been in there since 2009, when the pool building closed, and the roof, there's, you can see the sky if you go inside there, I mean, it's just, it's in deplorable condition. I also recommended removal and replacement of the Mason Street fencing at Lafayette Park, that was approximately 32,000 for the estimate that I had gotten. I did have an increase of water and sewer, because that just goes with the territory, and the other is the study that I had put in. But I did have a breakdown per court, like I said, that was probably the majority of that $300,000, that was going to do court repairs.
So, it's pretty evident that, Ms. Olivera, would you, do you consider basically this to be reasonable in terms of what the, what the cost would be for, for example, Highland Park basketball courts, crack fill, paver seam, depression, color coat, and re-stripe? I assume you've seen this?
I have.
Yes. So, for the most part, I mean, do you consider these to be reasonable requests? Based on the fact that we own them, we should be maintaining them, and the cost to get us back up to snuff, so that when we, as moving forward, we can simply maintain them?
I do, I mean, there are some things that I have comments on, but, but yeah, we need to, we need to make sure we bring everything up to where it should be. I had numerous discussions on what it takes to, to bring the basketball courts and up to, up to speed at this point, and that's exactly what you do. They treat, they treat the basketball courts like tennis courts, so it has to be done pristine, and from that point on, we just maintain it, and with periodic inspections. We can't let it get to this degradable type of situation.
So, I think then, that we all can pretty much agree that $75,000 for maintenance for 25 parks truly isn't an adequate amount of money, based on the needs of the city?
So, that 75 is for operational, these are capital items that we have to work on. The operational budget is the 75. Additional funds are needed for any other items beyond the operational day-to-day repairs, so there's a big difference.
So, all repairs are considered capital items?
No, 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 I mean, small, small repairs, you have the small repairs, medium repairs, and large capital item repairs. That budget doesn't, doesn't suffice a full-fledged repair such as this. We can't, we can't put these items in a operational budget.
Can I just add to the, so, I mean, again, ARPA, one of the easiest ways to spend ARPA money is in open space, which is Parks. So, we did know, I mean, Attorney Home's been working on, I don't know how many weeks, months, so we did know, and the mayor had said to Mrs. Smith, when we met with her, that we were going to like identify other sources of money to be able to do these things. And we also know that there's, you know, many times there's earmarks available for Parks in open space. There's other opportunities available for open space that we want to be able to take advantage of, and not have to use taxpayer dollars. So, we did say that we were going to identify other sources of funds to do these bigger projects with, and that's what we're doing, is we're looking to find those other sources of funds to get those done this year.
Well.
Can I address that?
Certainly.
Which is fine, and I understand that, but when, this is to a point, we're at this point, that this becomes a capital project, because we're at this point. However, I do have other things, playground flooring, or fix, you know, for example, small things, fix fencing for $5,000, fix, and if that's going to come from this $75,000, as we talked about, and I have ball field materials of 15,000, now I have to fix the fence, that's another 10,000, that 75,000 just doesn't cut it. I understand that right now, we're talking big money, because we have not invested in these parks, but I think that these courts could be done one at a time in the future, when these cracks appear, then you address that particular court at that time. And that's the kind of money that I came here forward looking for. Now, no department, more than myself, uses community development funding, community preservation funding, every single project that we have done over the last 10, 12 years, other than a Kennedy Park backstop, that these, that the taxpayers put in my budget, $100,000. Other than that, every improvement in the park system has come from an alternative source. I mean, there are other departments that have historical buildings, I don't see that in their budget, seek alternative sources. They have the opportunity also to pursue CPC funding, or perhaps CDA funding. I mean, it just seems that it's always, it's always the Parks Department that's sent on the chase to find other funding.
Well, I would agree with you, because year after year after year, Councilor Cadim comments on that, and Councilor Cadim wants a master plan, and Councilor Cadim has asked many times for the same thing over and over and over, and it still has never come to fruition. So, to, I agree with that. And also, this money that we're talking about, the ARPA funding, that we're going to be using to upgrade, I received a call from the ARPA director this, just this week, stating that the money is coming from an endeavor that the Councilor in seat seven and myself had advocated for. So, that money is being rescinded. So, this decision with this $200,000 is actually very recent. And I, I also touched base with the mayor on it, after speaking with her. So, I'm really glad that we have that money, I'm glad we're going to be able to upgrade our parks. I think in the future, we need a larger budget to maintain our parks. We cannot continue to let them deteriorate year after year like we have.
We spoke about idle funds in park projects, so when that did, when we did have that conversation in the mayor's office, I went back and I looked into these budget reports that are sent to the council of the idle park projects. I did see that in 2019, there was $53,31, $331, and it said, City Park Repairs, Basketball Courts, Abbott Court, Kennedy Park, Maplewood Park, North Park, and Ruggles Park. That money would not have had to be repurposed, that money was leftover money from that original project. So, when I went into that, so that was in 2019, we'll call it. So then, when I went into 2020, that same City Park repairs was down to $38,000. So, some of that $53,000 went somewhere, and it didn't go to those court repairs. I went into 2021, City Park repairs, the $38,000 became $35,000. And then, after that, I went into 2022, and the $35,000 was gone. So, I don't know where these particular funding, if we have to repurpose them, then we should have somewhere where these funds were repurposed. These funds would not have had to be repurposed when I came here last year and asked for the courts to be done. There would have been some, well, I'm lying, I take it back, because by 2022, they were gone. So, right now, I'm showing 39,000 in Thomas Chu Park. I'm going to venture to say that that was when the Buildings Division bought the splash pads, because when they bought them, they bought the splash pads separately, and they had a different person install them. So, I had all said before, there was a little bit of an accounting issue with the, with the previous Buildings Department not utilizing their grant funding, using their own budget. So, this $39,000 is in Chu Park. So, is it simply for splash pads, or can we repurpose that to the ball field?
I don't know, does anybody know the answer to that question?
Well, that's what we're looking at right now, and so, and I, I mean, I understand what you're looking at, but I, the people sitting at this table who were not here in 2019.
No, you were not, so that's correct.
Again, and I, and I.
And I'm not accusing anybody, but I'm saying, the money was there, there was $53,000 for these, and I can't tell you how many times I've come down to this council, and they're like, there are idle park funds, there are idle park funds. I think this past time, even Councilor Ponti said that. So, I went into the idle park funds and saw what was there. So, at this point, there's probably, like, I guess, another 40-some thousand dollars in idle park funds.
So, there was a, I mean, I do believe, and I don't remember when it was. So there was a, I mean, I do believe, and I don't remember when it was, but there was some, a park fund that had deficits. So I believe that it got netted with that. And again, we have to pull the loan authorizations and then look at that. And that's what we're doing is, is we wanna make sure we're doing things correctly. I don't know what happened in 2019, or, you know, even 20, you know, and up until 22. I mean, I came at the end of 22, as well as Ms. Olivera came in 23.
23.
So, I mean, again, we have to like, look into those and, and go back through the history of that stuff without just making snap decisions. And that's what we're doing. And, and Mrs. Smith, I mean, I'd be more than happy to look at what you're bringing forward. I just, that's the first time I'm hearing about going back to 2019.
Well, it was when we had the conversation in the mayor's office about the, the idle funds. So I went in and kinda investigated where these idle funds were. And I, and I, I just think that, it seems like, it seems like, I put my budget forward, I asked for the money, and we're getting the money in the 11th hour because I ran into the bank with a gun and a mask.
That's not what happened.
Well, I think from my point of view, I think some of my line of questioning and where I'm going with this is, we have 25 parks. Most of our parks are beautiful. Parks are very important. Outdoor space, very important. So I think maybe, you know, we call this ground zero. Moving forward, we invest the money. I mean, if you have it, maintain it. What happens if you don't maintain your house? You have to. So I, I think that's, that's a lot of what I'm pushing for and, and trying to say. I think it's unfortunate. You know, again, we had three skate parks. What happened? Two of them aren't any good. It, it, it's, three of them aren't any good. We're building a brand new one. It's just a shame that we have so much and we don't, we choose apparently not to take care of it to, to a certain extent. So something else I'd like to get into right now, because I wanna give other people obviously the opportunity to speak. Back to the vacancies. We had received initially on page 151, the total salary number at the bottom, 79,685, was actually incorrect. Should have been 914,900 because there were four vacant, four funded vacancies. Three of those, for whatever reason, didn't make it into that number. So, so then on Wednesday, we've, we've got this other page where the four vacancies are still there. The line item has been decreased. All the light item, line items across have been decreased so that it does total 779,000. And then with two asterisks, funds will be transferred from reserve if positions are able to be filled. Well, my comment on this is, this is the only department I've seen this in. We have other departments that have funded vacancies. So should, should we put all funded vacancies in the reserve account and call it if? If somebody gets hired, we'll transfer the funds?
No, this is different. And here's why.
Yes, please, explain.
So when we, so the budgets were submitted, they started working on the budgets, putting it together, including the total appropriation. There was a conversation with the Parks Department, and the conclusion was that they just needed more people. And the agreement was three more people. That was added in. And it was added in pretty late in the game. So the idea was that we're gonna hire for those positions, we're gonna advertise for those positions, we're gonna, we wanna give Director Smith every opportunity to, to have her full complement of people to do the work she needs to do. But rather than change the entire appropriation and, and basically, you know, it's sort of a, a domino effect, right? You change, you know, you add three positions and all of a sudden you're changing the appropriation, you're changing everything. If we, if we're able to hire for those positions, which one of those was vacant already at the start of the budget and had been vacant for a little bit, I'm not saying a long time, but had been vacant for some period of time. We always have a little bit of trouble, you know, filling vacancies generally because it's just a tough economy out there, you know, given that there's other places, whether it's private, private companies or towns, you know, hiring at really, you know, inflated, you know, salaries over what they were a few years ago, even a year ago. So the decision was made to add those three positions because they're important, but to not change the appropriation and to come down to this council and let you know if we're able to fill.
So is the reserve fund reflected in the budget?
Yes.
Yes. Is the reserve fund in the appropriation?
Yes.
Yes. So if you're gonna put those positions in the reserve fund, then that appropriation needs to go up $135,000. Whether you're leaving the funded vacancies in her budget or putting it in the reserve fund, the appropriation is wrong.
No, they've.
Okay. I mean, reasonable people can, can disagree. I understand what you're saying. But we just happen to make a decision to try to do it in a way that didn't shift a whole bunch of things and have us, you know, replacing 10 pages in the budget. That's, that's all.
And these were new positions added. You know, other departments didn't add new positions. So these were brand-new positions that weren't in her, weren't in the budget. And this is what, and when we talked about it, and the mayor said, you know, we'll, if, if we can fill them, then we'll, we'll transfer you the money. But that was, you know.
So if they're brand-new positions, never in the budget, then wouldn't they have had to go to ordinance first?
Well.
I don't think so.
No.
No?
No, because the, the positions exist in ordinance. It's just a matter.
They already exist in ordinance. We just haven't funded them.
It's just a regular labor position.
It's just the number of them.
Like, there's no specific number of laborers in ordinance that you're limited to in the Parks Department. So if we wanted to add a laborer, we can add a laborer. In this situation, we're trying to be responsive to the request of the department.
Well, I think the 135,000, it's whether, whether it's in the reserve fund or in the, or in this budget, it's there. It's in the budget, it's in the appro, it should be in the appropriation. So if that's the case, personally, I think it should stay exactly where it is. Let's put a deadline. Any, any funded vacancies that aren't filled by the third quarter, move all the money into the reserve fund because you haven't filled the vacancies. You know, in full transparency, people should be able to open this budget. Anybody, open the budget and go to all the departments and say, okay, we have 19 FTEs in this department. They shouldn't have to look at it and say, well, let's see, do we have 19, 15, 16? How many do we have? People, people need to know. How many people are working in this city? How many FTDs we have? And how much money is dedicated to those positions? And I think taking it and putting it in the reserve fund is muddying the waters and making this not as straightforward as it should be.
We wouldn't wanna muddy the waters.
So with that, I will yield for now.
Thank you, Council. I just had a question. Nancy, you said that the money was in there, $50,000 at one point?
Yes.
To do the repairs to the parks?
Yes.
And then at the end of the year, it got smaller, the next following year was less, and then the following year after that was gone completely?
Yes.
So when you had the money in the budget, why didn't you do the work with it?
No, it's not in my budget. It's in idle park funds. And those were projects that were not done in the Park Department. They were done in the Facilities Department. Or when Mr. Pacheco was here, I think he was the one who did the basketball courts. That's how far back that, I think that money went. But the, this money is not money that I have
But they went for the same, but it went for the same purpose, to fix the basketball courts. And that's what the money was there for, isn't it?
No, that was a grant. What it, and that's what I think Ms. Alman is saying, is it was grant money for that project. And that's why it has to somewhat, if it's not the same thing, would have to be repurposed. Because what happened was, obviously, that through whatever accounting, $53,000 was left in that account after that project was complete. So those be, start to become idle funds.
I understand that. But my point was.
But that's what you get in active capital projects. That, I got this from the, from the reports that are sent to the council.
Yeah, no, I understand how it works. I get it. But I'm saying, couldn't you find another like project, another basketball court in the city to use that money for?
If I had access to it, yes. I never had it in my access, at my access.
I get it. So another department had it and they were doing the work.
Point of information, it's in capital projects. So the money is in capital projects, money that was authorized, money that was not used. It's un, so it's projects that aren't, that weren't, I mean, so it was sitting there. It had, it had to be transferred.
Oh, I understand that. But my point, I'm trying to get is, okay, so if I'm working in the Park Department, there's a capital project there and it's, no one's using, why wouldn't you push to get it used?
Well, I'll be honest with you. When Maplewood Park.
Please, be honest. Well, that's what we want. I like it.
When Maplewood Park's lighting project was short funding, I did send a request. I didn't get an answer.
Okay, so that's all I want to know.
Is there fund, is there fund, funding available that we could subsidize this project with? Because it's 450,000, the CPC money that we have is 400. Is there money available in other park projects that we would be able to use? I never got a response.
And you have a follow-up? Why didn't you get a response? I mean, I don't know. People ask people questions all the time.
At that point, I went back to the CPC and they gave me the $50,000.
I just, I don't give up that easy. My point is, if someone, I ask a question at work and I don't get an answer, I'll wait until another call says, hey, can I get an answer to the question? Is there money available? I just don't say, never ask again, and wait a couple of years and then say, oh, now the money's gone.
Mr. Olivera and I went before the CPC and we got, we asked them for an additional $50,000 and that, so we didn't need to utilize that money. We went to the CPC.
Then I, then that's good. I'm glad you used CPC money for that because that's what it's meant for. If that's the case, I'm happy with it. Okay, Councilor CDA, Councilor Sampson.
Thank you, Council President. Right along the same lines as Council President, there are so many things that are bothering me about this conversation right now. There's either a lack of communication or a lack of accountability. And I'm trying to figure out which it is. Because I do not like hearing, well, I wasn't here in 2019, or he wasn't here until 2023. It doesn't matter, you're here now. So either you never knew about these projects and this is the first time you're hearing of it, or Nancy, you haven't asked for the money. So I mean, I'm not understanding where the problem is. Parks, our biggest thing, we've talked about it. We're, we're looking at a skate park, right? I think the majority of us voted for a skate park. We wanna do better things in the parks. And here we, you have these projects and you're saying that the money was once there, it's not there. So I guess I'm asking you directly. You said, so Ms. Alman said, this is the first time I'm hearing of it. And you're like, no, I'm not. So the, the greater public is listening. When have you asked for these things to be done? Have you said, look, the money was taken out of my budget, you're the department head, you're gonna.
It wasn't taken out of my budget. These projects were done through the Facilities Maintenance Department.
Okay, however they were done.
They were never, ever, ever park funds, ever.
Mrs. Smith, I'm not your department head, right? I am not. You, you, that is your department. You were gonna advocate. You know where the money was, where it wasn't. You just sat here and said, here's where it was. You have your meeting. Did you advise them, look, this is where the money was at one time? They're sitting in idle projects. We really need to get this done. And you directed them in the right direction. If you did that, then that's a problem on the other end.
The council has directed them to these idle projects as well. Because, I, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and take a beating. I have.
Hold on. No one's giving a beating. She's asking questions. Please let's not take it to the next level. It's not necessary.
I, I feel like.
We're all being a court jury.
I have had conversations about these idle funds. These idle funds go back to the point where Council Long was on this board, and we kept on asking, can we use these idle funds? Can we use these idle funds? But the idle funds need to be transferred by the council to be used for these other projects. I just can't go in and, and, and I can ask all I want. And the conversations have been had. But the conversations sometimes end. And the council picked up the conversation and said, how about these projects? How about this money? And, and, and obviously, it's not only me asking for that and it not happening.
So my, so I guess I should say, I should, you can't take my questions personal because it is our job to figure out what it is. So if my head is spinning with the communication that's going on around here, I've gotta try to make sense of it.
Yes.
And my head is spinning because you're saying one thing, Ms. Alman is saying another thing. So I'm trying to make sense of it. So what you're saying to me is that you have asked for these funds.
Yes.
And you have been, said no. So then Ms. Alman, I ask you, have they asked you for these funds, directed you? And you're saying, hey, I, I wasn't here in 2018. Because that is a big problem. Our parks are so important to this city.
So what I meant by, is her, the dollar amounts are different. From what she's showing me in 2019, those, the balances are not the same balances today. So I would have to go investigate like what got spent or what was used out of that. That's what was the point. And Mrs. Smith has not personally asked me, but I've been working with Mr. Olivera, or with the amounts that we have available that are left in, that we've worked with the city auditor to see what the balance is left. And we, he's working on identifying projects to then use those funds for.
So I'm gonna.
And we, we have used, we have been cleaning up a lot of those idle funds.
So I'm gonna ask that there's some better communication.
So I, I have an email. I actually have an email that I sent to Ms. Alman. And this was in regard to that. But first, I sent it to the city auditor. And he was like, that's not a question I can answer. You need to send it to the CFO. And I did. And I didn't get an answer back. And in the meantime, we were scurrying around to try to get the money from somewhere. And we ended up getting it from CPC. So I did not pursue that email any further.
So Ms. Alman, I'm gonna ask you, would this be a project that the new person that you hired would look at? So she was hired to look at past grants, past, like, stuff like this?
No. So we, we actually, we pulled all the loan authorizations. And we're reviewing all those loan authorizations for all of these idle funds. So we, we've already started working on this.
Okay. So that's a much better answer than, I wasn't here in 2019. So I appreciate that answer.
I, I meant just the balances are, have changed. So the dollar amounts that Ms. Smith is, is telling you is from 2019. The change, those numbers have changed.
Well, so when people are at home or listening, it's just a better answer. So I appreciate your looking into it. The other thing I have, Ms. Smith, when you were here before, a few months ago, we talked about possibly looking at maybe the Sheriff's Department coming into work because you have these positions that you need. You, they, I don't even know if you had all of those laborers' positions in there, but they're added. Did you make any progress looking at possibly having some of the Sheriff's Department? Now, I know there was a question, we can't do it in the parks. But there are city on, off the highways, off, you know, the ramps that people can clean up. Did, have we?
We normally use the CED kids in the summer, those programs. We normally utilize them in the summer.
So.
So I did not reach out to the Sheriff's Office. That would probably be something that we have to have a conversation with Mr. Olivera about.
There you go, Mr. Olivera. It's all you.
Counselor, I did contact the Sheriff's Office. And the Sheriff's Office, we had a set date and time to meet. And we did talk over the phone. All activities from the Sheriff's Office has been ceased due to lack of staffing on their end.
Yeah.
But we did, we did talk to them about that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. So I guess I'm gonna yield for now, Council President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Councilor C5, Councilor Vice President Perro.
I'm, I'm quick. Nancy, you had a foreman retire?
Yes.
Is there another person already in that position?
No.
When will there be someone in that position?
Well, we were hold, not doing any of that because it was all this talk of reorganizations. And we were not gonna promote someone if, if positions were going to be shifted and changed. So it's basically one body. He is being paid service out of rank for that position right now until we.
Ms. Olivera, when, when are you figuring out, Ms. Akins, when are you figuring out this reorg and when there's gonna be a foreman there? Anybody know?
Well, there is a foreman there. He's paid service out of, the, the person is acting in the foreman's capacity.
So you have an acting foreman?
Yes.
Okay. I know we've talked about capital projects. When was Britland Park done? I think John Mitchell was mayor.
Twenty, Britland Park, not the turf.
The turf.
The turf was 2015.
2015?
Yes.
So the turf needs to be done again?
Yes.
What's the amount to redo that field with turf? More or less?
I would say at least 200 to, to rehab it, maybe more. It, it would depend on the condition of the, the field. I mean, I, I would even go as far as saying 350 to be safe.
500,000.
500,000? Are we looking at doing that?
That's a complete redo.
No. That's a, that's a turf, that's a turf project. We, all the drainage is all set. And then the, the type of turf is gonna be selected. And that's, that's the, that's the normal turf.
It was 500,000 when we did it.
Right.
So it may be, if we're gonna do as.
In 2015.
I would say that you're gonna go more than, you're probably gonna do your 700 like your skate, like your skate park.
So I just wanna clarify. When you, we talk about the turf, we're talking about the soccer turf, not baseball turf, not football.
No, the soccer.
Just a soccer field.
The soccer field. I know turf is very expensive.
$500,000 to do the soccer field turf. That what you're saying?
Yes.
That's about the cost, yes.
I'd like to see that quote.
Wow. Lot of money to do that. Some of the fields.
Grass seeds a lot less expensive.
Some of the field, pardon?
Grass seeds a lot less expensive.
Yeah. But then you need the manpower to keep it, moat and keep it fertilized and everything else. Part of what I see in the parks, and we have done pickleball courts and Ecuadorian volleyball, et cetera. But some of the parks, we need kind of a master plan on what parks are being used, what parks are not being used. If we had a nice softball field, you'd have traveling teams come in. That brings economic development, tourism to the area. People come, I mean, we all know Brian Bishop, he does a lot of work around here. He's all over the place with softball. And he would certainly have them come here if we had a location. And, you know, they usually come and stay a week and, and play ball. I have many people that ask me about football. We had kids at Morton that played flag football. And they tried to get onto the Durfee Field. And we're quickly scurried away from there. But what fields do we have for softball, for soccer? You know, I, I think we need to look at that. And I know ethnically, the city changes. And we have very few little leagues. I don't know, we don't have the coaches or what have you. Maplewood Park is pretty up and, and coming there. You know, they're pretty active. Maplewood Park is pretty up and, and coming there. You know, they're pretty active. Kennedy Park at the top, they're active. But Lafayette Park isn't now. Um, so what could we repurpose that to so that people could use it and would have somewhere to go? Behind Britland Park, there's all that grass area back there. I mean, that's levels, pretty much levels. Can we put some soccer nets there? Like, how are we going to get a list of what parks are being utilized, which ones aren't? And what it's going to cost us to repurpose some of these parks so that people can use them? Would you be doing that or would there be a consultant that comes in to do that?
I, I would think that we could say what we wanted to repurpose them for. But I think what the best thing would be is to have someone who is like a planner, an urban, like, like we do an open space plan.
Right.
And that's what we were talking about. And they tell you what, you know, this is the demographic here. This is what's being used. Because maybe some of the fields are not being used, but what that does help do is for an individual who, who is not a member of a league, like I, I had a request this week. Some family or group wants to go play kickball. So the field that you were talking about at the bottom of Kennedy Park, that's not utilized by a league, is somewhere that they can go and not worry about a league coming in or a coach coming in or what. So we do have some of those fields that do need to stay open.
And you and I have, and I agree with that, and you and I have talked about this issue before. And a good point was about parking, that, you know, when we do these fields, we need to make sure that there's adequate parking. I mean, years ago, if you went to Lafayette Park and watched a game, there was always parking available. But now, the multifamily houses around there, it's not where one family has one car. They have two, three, four cars sometimes. So we need to look, look at that. Um, I know CPC funding too has been used by the cemetery department for the North burial grounds. They had redone that. And that does give us a lot of money. Is it hard to get people to come in and work because of the pay?
Well, we raised the pay now and that's why I had that one vacant position. As I said, I utilized that to help fund those increases. Our top laborer, top step was getting sixteen dollars an hour. And then that's when we up, we up them to twenty because that was our maximum step. Until the, they can renegotiate.
Right.
But since I've been twenty dollars, can I fill them a lot easier? Sure. No one was working for sixteen dollars an hour. No person was going to be able to support their family on sixteen dollars an hour. I mean, some jobs for kids are paying more than sixteen dollars an hour. So there was no, I was not getting anybody. But now at twenty, yes, I, I am able to interview and get people to work.
I mean, that's what I'm, I'm looking at, at how we can repurpose fields for people to be able to use them. And I know we have to have some that are free that, uh, but it just seems that we need to have a plan of which park is going to be what. And if there is money, and I do remember when Council Long was here talking about that. But, you know, to say that, you know, the council has to allow the money, that's true. But the council usually gets it from the mayor.
To repurpose, correct.
And at that time, Jaisel was the mayor and he did not bring that down even though we had spoken to him about it. Um, I know Council Long had spoken to him about it because we spoke about it. Um, so, pardon?
This council probably remembers that a couple, well, more than a couple of months ago, maybe six months ago, you authorized the Bristol County ARPA funds for an open space and recreation plan through SERPET.
Right.
Remember that?
Right.
So that, we're a couple of months into that. It has a group of community members and city people who are all working on, on that, which is.
How long is that going to take for us to get?
We're, I mean, we're probably a few, still a few months out before we start doing that. But part of that is going to include public hearings, similar to the opioid funds.
Right.
Uh, it's going to include a lot of public input. Um, and I think that while it's not specifically a park plan, it, it's a much broader plan.
Right.
It is going to yield some really, I think, important insights, especially from folks that we normally don't hear from. Um, you know, different community leaders who are part of that process. And SERPET, I think, does a remarkable job, you know, leading these type of, of exercises.
They do.
Um, so what we're going to have is a renewed plan. It's going to, it's going to take a deep dive into all the open space and recreation. Um, and at the same time, there's going to be public input that goes with that. So I think we're going to get some, some from that. Plus, I know that Mr. Olivera has been, you know, there was a, um, there was a, uh, inspection of all of the playground equipment uh, with some steps to how we improve or have to replace those. Um, there's also a lot of preventive maintenance things that are going on to try to assess what we're need.
And some of those playgrounds, I think Ms. Smith was right. A lot of the money that comes from that comes from CDA money or from, you know, community development. Uh, talking about that, what's going on at Lafayette Park with the equipment there, the, the children's equipment there?
I'm not sure. At the, at the park that I know of needing the repairs and we, and I've ordered that. Um, matter of fact, I'm waiting for them to come in probably next week. I've ordered the pieces, the parts for that was Poleski Park. I didn't have any, um, big issues at Lafayette that we didn't correct in-house. So I'm not sure.
I think swings and stuff like that, I don't know if they broke or they weren't safe. They took some, some things down.
Well, so, so here's the case in point with that. We're talking about swings. From that seventy-five thousand dollars that we were talking about, that's what I buy. I had to buy this replacement equipment. I had to buy the swings. We have to, we have to buy the, you know, the nets. These are the things that come from that seventy-five thousand dollars. So i- in, in all actuality, when you, if a, a bucket swing for, you have to buy a commercial grade bucket swing and they're, they're a hundred and forty-five dollars, some of them. I mean, it all depends what you're buying. These, these are the things that come from that seventy-five thousand dollars. So it doesn't last a long time. I, I will, I mean, are there other accounts that we use? Yes. Um, but in, all in all, the money that we get, I think we could use a little, a little bit more.
I remember the, the basketball nets. Manny Papula used to go around and buy nets and put nets at all of the basketball. I mean, he passed away just a few, a few weeks ago or a month ago, but did a lot.
The mayor does that now. The mayor calls me. He's going around now checking, checking nets. He's, and he lets me, he, he said he's going to be, become the new Manny Papula.
That's good. He's tall enough. He can reach them and.
That's what he said. I only need a short step ladder.
And who, who's that?
The mayor.
But have you gotten any grants from the, the grant writer at City Hall? Are there any grants that are available for parks?
Um, we have, we applied for one for Lafayette Park. We didn't get the grant for Lafayette Park.
Any grants available for Olmsted Park since we have Olmsted Parks?
That's something the grant writer.
Is that something, Ms. Akins, you can look into? Seeing if Jasmine can look at what types of grants. There should be grants for Olmsted Parks as well. And I'm interested in seeing a plan of what.
That's a good point.
Of what we can do to get that done. All right. Uh, I yield with Nancy's questioning, but I wanted to ask you. Remember when you were here, I don't know, last week, and we talked about the litter control people that you had at DCM?
Yes.
Or DPW, DCM? Um, so I asked for a list and how much did we make? And I, I did get a list. Um, but from July to December, there were two hundred and fifty-four citations given. From January to May, four hundred and fifty-eight. So seven hundred and twelve. Of those, a hundred and thirty-six tickets were paid totaling fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. We have three people who are working and getting benefits for fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars? Maybe we need to revisit that. It just, I mean, they should be making more and, you know, or making close to. Um, and I don't see that. You know, illegal dumping, there was one in August, one here. I think we need to highlight, when we catch illegal dumping and you know who does it, you need to highlight that. You need to get the media involved or whatever. So people know we're watching that. Um, sidewalk, I, I laughed when I looked at this and I saw, uh, snow and ice removal. There were two in January and forty in February. But then I have to say, forty in February, what about the city? You know, we have to make sure, if you expect the residents to have to make sure their snow and their sidewalks are cleared, the city needs to do that too. And unfortunately, I don't think you have enough manpower, you know, even at the parks department, for them to go around and clean the snow all around all these parks. So manpower is important and I hope that Mrs. Smith gets more individuals there. I think she needs that. But just look at that because maybe that's not so good. I like the concrete crew. Maybe we need another concrete crew. Then you could handle Lafayette Park. Rather than bid it out, do it little by little. I know there are other sidewalks that you're doing throughout the city, but if, you know, everybody can use a park. So there's got to be a balance. I don't know where that balance is, but I think that we need to kind of look at that. If, I don't think it's money well spent. Other than that, I yield for now, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor C six, Councilor Patti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, first off, a, a couple of things. Um, I wanted to hit your Parks Department buildings and ground maintenance for seventy-five thousand. And maybe you were speaking about this with my colleague in seat two. City will look to outside funds to do as many identified projects. What does that mean? What projects?
I didn't put that in.
So that meant, so originally, Mrs. Smith put over an extra three hundred and I forgot the exact number in. And when we met with the mayor with Mrs. Smith, um, we pulled out tho, that fund again because of that, the open space that's being done. And because we said we want to utilize these other funds that we have sitting and use other, you know, earmarks or grants or ARPA funds as much as we can. Because again, we want to keep this a very lean budget. And so that's what it meant. It's because we took that three hundred and something thousand out of her budget. I think it was actually two fifty we took out.
Yeah, it was three hundred thousand for, um, repairs and it was two hundred and fifty thousand for the study that I had put in.
Okay. So I guess my plan is, is there a plan in this fiscal year to address those specific needs for the plan and for those repairs? Are you, are you going to be just hoping to use other money or hoping for?
So, well, we've already identified like two hundred and forty or two hundred, just about two hundred, just under two hundred and fifty thousand of funds that we've already identified outside funds to use. And as Mr. Akins said, and I don't know all about that SERPET, um, open space, but.
So yeah, so I mean, I don't think there was, I don't believe hope is ever a plan. Um, and so we're certainly not hoping, uh, with regard to this open space and recreation plan. We're doing it. Um, I'm on the committee. Uh, we've met several times. Um, I just confirmed it looking through my records. Uh, it's actually supposed to be done at the very beginning of calendar year twenty-five, so maybe six months or so. Uh, until we're, uh, complete with that. And I think it'll yield some really good results. It'll certainly include parks as well as other open space. Um, and, you know, areas including, you know, the Dave's Beach area and the picnic area and all the other important areas that may not be parks but are critically important open spaces in the city. Um, so that's, that's certainly more than, you know, a speculative idea. It is happening and it's moving forward. Um, and it's being done with folks that know how to do it. With regard to, um, uh, the other identified projects, a couple of things have happened. Uh, one is that the mayor commissioned Attorney Humm to start looking at ARPA to see what unused funds there were there. Um, and she was able to claw back some money, including the two oh five I just mentioned. Uh, he directed the financial team to start looking at, um, any of, just the outstanding monies, uh, you know, that either were bonded at some point or, or borrowed or just are there in any capacity, looking for, for, uh, unused funds there. And that was raised by yourself, Counselor, not that long ago. We talked about streets, streetscapes among other things. Um, you know, that, uh, you know, is, is part of an effort that the mayor's commissioned from the financial team. And then finally, um, he and I met with community preservation to look at, going back, I believe, to two thousand and eighteen, every project that had leftover funds in it that was a city project. So as everyone knows, just for whoever's watching and whoever might be in the audience that doesn't know, um, community preservation grants funding both to city departments as well as private entities out, out in the community. Um, some of them are nonprofits, but just non-city entities. We looking, looking just in the city projects, uh, we were able to find, uh, a pretty significant amount of money uh, that right now is being verified by CPC of leftover monies that weren't completely used up going back those many years. With agreement by CPC, uh, to accept a proposal from the city for use of those monies, even though they're, it's not the traditional way. It has to be in by a certain time and then vetted. Uh, they would consider it through their vetting process, but they would allow us to do it once they certify the amount of funds that are available. Uh, and those are significant as well. So I think we've been able to find hundreds of thousands of dollars. The question now is, is, um, you know, where to put those to. Uh, at the same time, no matter what improvements we do to the parks, it doesn't matter if we're not going to maintain them. Uh, you know, that's the thing that I learned almost immediately getting in front of this council. Um, and, you know, realizing that, you know, we can have the greatest parks in the world, but if we're not maintaining and, and making sure that not only do we have nice things, but we keep them nice, then what are we doing? Um, and so Mr. Olivera, I think, has done a really nice job instituting, not just in parks, but a, a, across his entire department. Preventive maintenance, inspections, uh, you know, surveys, trying to figure out how are we using what we have and how are we taking care of it? Uh, and it's been the start of some really good things. And I think we're actually going to start to see it pay dividends very soon. So.
All right. So there was a lot there. Um, I'll just say that I think with the resources that the Park Department has, limited in, in its sense, does a fairly good job maintaining our parks.
I think so too. They do a great job.
With, with, with not enough staffing, which we've always talked about, and limited resources, I think they do a really good job. So I, I think we need to credit that department more with doing everything they, that they do do with, with what they need for more. But I, I want to, I want to touch on something that was said by a colleague of mine. And we spoke about the reserve fund, right, under general government. You have eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of reserve money. What, what, what exactly are you intending to do with that? Because usually, at prior budgets, under prior administrations, I do remember there being another page under other and insurance that kind of break, that used to break down what we were doing with that. What is the plan with that?
So the reserve fund is, is exactly that. It's a contingency. We have, um, collective bargaining that's going on right now. So.
But didn't, didn't, didn't we have a discussion last week that you included collective bargaining increases under individual n- names of people in AFSMI?
Certainly. However, um, the problem with collective bargaining is that you can't really count on, I mean, not the problem, but the reality of collective bargaining is you can't count on it ending up the way you think. Uh, and I think a great example is the, the fire arbitration. Um, you know, both sides worked really seriously to try to get to an agreement. It ended up, we couldn't do it. It went to arbitration. It wasn't what we thought. Um, so I think that can happen anytime you're in collective bargaining. So reserve can be used for that. Uh, that's certainly something we talk about all the time.
Sure. So I guess my, my question is, if this is a lean budget, why do we have a reserve account assigned to possible AFSMI, for example, collective bargaining negotiations? And you've also attempted to increase AFSMI employees under their specific salary line item? That doesn't make sense. So see, it sounds to me that you have reserve and then you also have added that to their salary line.
No, not at all. Um, first of all, I mean, our side, the city side, is about a hundred and ninety-one million dollars. If you take out the two things we can't control, mainly being, um, uh, retirement, you know, you know, pension increases, that sort of thing, we're about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over last year. Um, that's less than a percent. I mean, if that's not a lean budget, I don't know what is. But, but I think reasonable people, again, can disagree as to what a lean budget is. I would say this certainly is.
I, I want to just clear something up. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this isn't making any sense. We've had, we had discussions last week that specifically stated that there are some individuals who are AFSMI employees that have, if you call it a position, that they're getting paid seventy-five thousand dollars in this budget.
That wasn't the discussion. The discussion was that there are a number of people who follow the AFSMI raise. They're not AFSMI employees. They're, they're not part of the union. But because of the way they're, they're set up in, and you, I think you would have gotten the, the chart today. Uh, those folks, that's not who you asked for. You didn't ask for.
That's not, yeah, no, I, I understand.
They're not in there. But there are a number of folks who follow AFSMI that are set by ordinance, capped by ordinance.
Yep.
There are raises in there speculating as to what we think the AFSMI raise is, but they're not AFSMI. The AFSMI employees are a whole different thing. They're actually in the union. None of them are making seventy-five thousand dollars.
I understand that. So then you're saying that you have eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of reserve?
I have, I can add to it.
Okay.
So we also have, um, the cops grant where, you know, depending on what the response is from the, uh, the request that we did, we will then have to fund forty percent of those positions. So that, part of that is in reserves. So I have to be, you know, it's a small contingency. And if you look at past budgets, which I have looked at past budgets, you did have contingent, you did have reserve funds.
Two point three million dollars one year. I saw that. But that was when there was many more collective bargaining negotiation and contracts open at that time, with all due respect. So I'm try, what I'm trying to understand is, because maybe I'm confused or maybe I misunderstood what was said last week. So are you saying that if I'm looking at parks, for example?
Yep.
If I were to look at individuals who are AFSMI employees, that they have a, a, the, the line, the number on there. the number on their budget does not include AFSMI potential increases to it?
No.
Miss, Miss...
Yeah, it's two percent.
Okay. So then if I'm looking at the Parks Department and there's a two percent increase within the salary line and then you have a reserve account, how much extra meat are you putting in the budget under salaries for the possible unknown? Because you have a reserve account that's open for eight hundred thousand dollars and you've got salary lines of individual employees that are expecting a step increase, but they are, you're also carrying it over in your appropriation order? I don't understand.
No, the, the AFSMI increase is reflected in the actual salaries.
In the, under their specific line item?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reserve, the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, part of that could be unknowns in AFSMI bargaining, part of that could be unknowns in the police grant if we're not actually able to use that fully, because there's some limitations to the police grant. There's any number of contingencies that are built into that. Just so I understand, is, is it your position that you, you're saying we should have no contingency at all? I think that's dangerous.
Well, I agree with the, I agree with the contingency because we've done that in prior years, but what we didn't do in prior years was have a contingency and then also increase the individual employees in the department, what a, what you may consider a increase in collective bargaining negotiations. If, why would you, why would you say you have the employee, for example, head clerk in the Park Department? Okay? I'm assuming that that is a, I'm just using this as an example.
Yep.
A salary of forty-one thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know how much...
Point of, point of information, is that the actual salary, because we don't have actuals in this budget, or is that just what was budgeted last year for that salary for that employee? Was the actual salary old budgeted?
So, so what I have for the actual salary that I submitted was forty thousand three fifty-two. That's what I submitted based on fifty, twenty-six point one, whatever. And then that with the contingency went to forty-one oh oh one. So it was forty thousand three fifty-two that I submitted based on twenty-six point one weeks.
You're putting how, you have, you have, you have a total annual salary in your department of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Are you going to...
But that's, that's with the contingency.
Of how much? Two point five percent?
Whatever they put. I didn't submit that.
How much was it?
We budgeted two percent.
So there's, so two percent. So if I subtract out two percent of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars...
Seven seventy-nine.
That would...
Would that include longevity inside...
That's what's sleeping, sleeping step increases.
Counselor, please don't interrupt. Let the counsel...
Do you understand what I'm trying to say here? How, how, this isn't, this isn't lean in any way, shape or form. If you've put into salary lines a two percent increase for individual employees and then you have a reserve account, that's not lean. That's not a lean budget. You're, you're expecting to negotiate with a union and give them maybe a two percent increase, maybe. I mean, we've all said it, but maybe you're, you're hoping for, hope, I hope it's not three, but it's, let's say it's two. Why would you also have a reserve account with almost a million dollars in it?
Well, it's not a million dollars. It's eight hundred and, but, so you also have, you have police officers who then, if they get education, that we then have to increase their budget. And there's different things that happen that you need, you should have a reserve. I mean, and it's, and we've reduced the reserve from prior years.
Yes, but there was...
And we also have, again, that COPS grant that we've talked about that...
The reserve, you can't compare this to prior years. Because prior years, the prior financed person who was in your seat put two point three million dollars in, in a reserve account for collective bargaining when police was open, fire was open, AFSMI was open, and, and anything else that was open. I don't know if there's anything else.
And they were still open long after they should have been...
Sure. And it flew through to free cash and you did whatever they, they did in that municipal budget. But what I'm trying to understand, and I can't wrap my head around it, is you would put, does every single department in this budget have a two percent increase under salaries?
No, just the AFSMI ones.
All right. And then, and so...
It's the only, that's the only open contract.
And so I would have to go through, well, pretty well, that's pretty much all the city hall. That's the city clerk's office. That's the Parks Department. That's...
Cemetery.
That's cemeteries. That's trees. That's...
But we also have Teamsters. We have police. We have fire. We have law. We have police superiors.
Right. I know that's police and fire. But I'm saying if you go through, I mean, I'm just looking at fifteen positions right here in the Parks Department and you have a two percent increase. So of this, how many did we, did you budget two percent increases for? Every department that has an AFSMI employee?
Whoever was an AFSMI employee.
And again, you have, you have individuals that will either move up into positions or different positions. And again, you have the Quinnville with police that then changes salaries that we may not know about all of those right now.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're getting two bites of the apple. You're getting it by inflating the salaries in the budget and having a reserve account.
Well, I don't fully feel that we've inflated salaries. I think we've been very conservative.
Well, of course you did. You did it by two percent.
Well, and again, we're not done collective bargaining. So, I mean, again, this budget, we only went up just eight hundred, I think it's eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars if you don't include pension.
Yeah, but you have...
And you don't include education.
My, my point is...
I mean, it's a very small increase.
Yeah, but you have two point three million dollars of free cash that you're rolling into this budget from last year. So that means that there was two point three million dollars of money that wasn't spent last year.
No, it's this year. We're using this year's, not last year's.
You're, you're using the current fiscal year.
So we're using the free cash that's certified for twenty twenty-four.
Right. In twenty twenty-five's budget. So what that, what does that tell us? That tells us that there was savings, duly noted, savings in twenty twenty-four's budget that you're using to balance your budget in twenty twenty-five.
So there was savings and we also, again, we made investment income of over three and a half million dollars, which the city has never done that before.
Right. With the interest raises high, you're capable of capitalizing on the money markets. I get that. I'm just trying to understand here that this, this, in my opinion, we, we can disagree here, that there is not, there, there is, this isn't as lean as we, we want to say that it is. There is positions in the budget that you have a reserve account for and you, you specifically put an increase under the individual people. And I have no, I would, I would spend hours going through the budget because it's not like it, it's noted XX, this is an AFSMI employee. I'd have to go through every single employee and find out which union they're in to find out how much money is, is, is possibly just hidden in the budget in terms of increased salaries that may or may not happen, notwithstanding the fact...
Hidden in the budget. I take exception to the characterization of hidden in the budget.
All right, maybe that's, that's the bad word.
We don't hide anything.
I'm sorry?
Other administrations have hidden things.
No, 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 I agree.
We do not hide things.
Okay, well...
We do not hide things.
You don't know hide things?
We do not hide things.
Okay. So then how do you have an employee?
Let's, let's keep it at a reasonable level.
How do you have an employee?
No need to be changing your business.
That is a department head that is in your budget, that is getting paid X amount, but there, but you have increased in their budget fifteen thousand dollars?
First of all, the fifteen thousand, and I've acknowledged this, was an estimate. It was an overestimate, no question about it. And that's a person that did not get any increase for FY twenty-four and was looking at likely an increase in FY twenty-five during this budget. So there was probably more of an increase budgeted for that person potentially, who hadn't even negotiated with the mayor at this point. There's nothing hidden there. There's, we're just trying to make sure that we can cover the costs if in fact the mayor sees fit to, to give that person an increase. That's it.
Well, I'll retract my comment that it was hidden, but it isn't entirely, entirely accurate and complete.
I agree to that. It's not clear.
It's not clear. It's very convoluted and it, it's, it's confusing. Like, how, how is a council that we're expected to vote on an appropriation order that has a reserve account of eight hundred thousand dollars and some AFSMI employees, not all, add a two percent increase?
Are, are you talking about the, the managers that are not AFSMI employees but are tied to AFSMI?
I'm talking about AFSMI and, and managers. I'm talking about both.
But when you, when you say some, all the AFSMI employees have the estimated two percent. The ones who are tied to AFSMI but are not AFSMI employees who are managers...
So break down for me, what came into that eight hundred thousand dollars in your reserve account?
Like, how is it constituted?
Yes. Where did that number come from?
Two percent.
No. How, how can it be two percent and you add two percent to an individual employee? That doesn't make sense.
Because we looked, so again, we, I think we've answered this. We've looked at the, you know, the police budget and we're trying to utilize funds that we don't want to give up grant funding and we, we need that, that money. If we want to keep funding the police, we, they gave us that money. We want to be able to utilize it. So if the, we can't fund the full position, okay? Otherwise, we would have been increasing this budget significantly. So the, the fourteen positions that we're not funding are patrol.
So you, so are you saying that the patrol, you're pulling that out of the specific department, but you're putting it into the reserve account?
We did not put, no, we did not fund another, that, that would be over a million dollars just in police.
So...
So we, what we did is we, we allocated for some of it in reserve fund because we, that grant covers sixty percent. And again, what, depending on the, a patrolman, the Quinnville, I don't know exactly how much that new patrol officer is going to cost. Because there could be other, again, they could have a master's degree. So, I mean, you have to build, I mean, we built a small contingency in there. And I, I stand by that this is a conservative budget.
Okay. Well, I can, I respectfully disagree on the comments of it's lean and it's conservative if you have increases for some, for the AFSMI union and you also have a reserve account that we really can't, you can't really tell me what you're going to plan to do with it other than just keeping a line item. We have the sta, we have the stabilization account too. I mean, I mean, we have all these...
So, I mean, so just, can I address this? So the stabilization account, I mean, you don't want to keep pulling money from there. That stabilization account should be, in my opinion, and, and GFOA and you've talked to Mass DOR, that stabilization fund for a city this size should be almost thirty million dollars. I mean, we would like to, in the long-term planning with this administration, is to build that stabilization up over the next three to four years so we can get to twenty million so that we can have, you know, investment income and then be able to use that investment income to buy police cruisers and the yearly equipment so that we're not constantly bonding for all this equipment. Because that's what's been happening over the last ten, fifteen years easily, is there's a loan authorization for trash trucks and police trucks. There's loan authorizations for, I don't know, whatever kind of trucks are in sanitation where they bought, they're just like, they have the Sanders on the back and the Plows. I mean, everything was a loan authorization. We're trying to get away from that. So we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to institute best practices and move this city forward. And, you know, a comment was made to me not too long ago, there was a former counselor, Alves. And because this city didn't have the proper reserves, and his comment was, is that when the state gets a cold, Fall River gets pneumonia. So we're trying to prevent that. We're trying to put this city in a, in a position...
Who made that comment?
Al Al.
Al Al.
He made it to you?
No, I was told about the comment that he made.
And we're the last to recover.
Yes. And so, I mean, let, let's, you know, let's try, I mean, we're doing, we feel like we're doing good things and we're trying to build up this stabilization so that you can put a best practice in place and you can use an investment income and you're not just always pulling down the principal and where you have nothing for an emergency. And then you want to try to replenish the stabilization fund. I mean, where our stabilization fund is still much lower than other gateway cities.
Yeah, and I, I hear you. But I remember, and some of my colleagues can remember here, when I first got on here years ago, that we had like two million dollars in stabilization. So, so I were, I, I remember those days, right? We, you were using it to pay net school spending eligible expenses.
I think at one point, there was a couple hundred thousand only in like twenty fifteen.
Yeah, that, that sounds about right. But to the work of councils who are asking questions like we're asking here have uncovered things that weren't necessarily unethical or anybody's trying to do anything wrong here or, or spin a message that we're not trying to be positive. That's not what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to do my job to understand why there's some managers that have a salary, but it says another thing in your budget. I'm trying to understand why you have a reserve account and you have AFSMI employees that also get a two percent increase. Just, it doesn't make any sense to me.
And you know, and I would, you can come into my office anytime and we can sit and go through like every single thing. I mean, I have no problem sitting with counselors. I mean, there's counselors that call me and they come and talk to me all the time.
Okay.
So, I mean, I extend that invitation to you as well.
I would, on that note, it would have been lovely to have budget briefings. We didn't have, I didn't have that courtesy to get a phone call to have budget briefings and sit down with the administration and say, what do you want, what's so funny?
No, nothing, sir.
Oh, okay.
No, that, that's surprising to me because I, I do know that the Six Four reached out to everybody at this, at this...
I don't remember, this is, this is, with all honesty, this is the first time I've never been asked to go to the mayor's office to go over a budget. Counselor, come pick up your budget.
That surprises me.
Let's sit down.
I, I know the chief of staff emailed everybody.
Maybe, maybe, but, you know...
She did rechallenge, if anyone has questions about the budget, please make an appointment to see the mayor.
That's, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that's just a little different than usually.
What's so different about it, Counselor? It's an invitation to access the budget and then, instead of a specific...
It was just done differently, so it is what it is. I'll yield for now.
Thank you. Couple of things I just want to point out, though. Prior years, when we'd get the budget, we would have the actuals in there, salaries, expenses. This year, we don't have it in there. It, it makes it more confusing, as the Counselor mentioned, to see what the actual cost was and what the new cost is and then with the increase in it. Is there a reason that the actuals aren't in this budget?
You mean actuals as far as with the salary start?
Yeah, everything.
I mean, I mean, we can change that practice going forward. This was something that we felt comfortable, we felt that we were getting close to negotiation.
But what would be the point of changing it? It was there just a couple of years ago.
Well, I think the idea was that with, with department heads, most of them don't actually negotiate any sort of increase until the first of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So we would be mid-budget by the time that happened. So that's, that's the reason they're...
Well, I think the idea was that with, with department heads, most of them don't actually negotiate any sort of increase until the first of the year. So, we would be mid-budget by the time that happened. So, that's, that's the reason there-
But, I mean, it did, I mean, listen, if we have, if we have the actual salaries, actual expenses for electricity, gas, if we had all the actuals for the year, it helps us better determine, you know, what the increases could be, should be, something reasonable. We, we don't even have any idea what some of the actual salaries are, as we were talking before, some of them have changed. So, it just helps to do the budget, we've always had it, and the budgets in the past that I've been a part of, and it just, it went away last year, I didn't make a case about it, but same thing here this year, no more actuals, and I think we should put them back in there going forward.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we kind of, I mean, we kept with historically similar styles of twenty-two, twenty-three, I mean, we could certainly take-
Oh, I'm talking about twenty, nineteen, eighteen, they're not, they were always in there historically, and then they would disappear in twenty-three, twenty-four.
And I would take that into advisement and look to, you know, add some more things and more information.
Appreciate it. It just makes it, you know, more, it makes a lot clearer. And another thing, too, stabilization account, thirty million dollars, I heard you said is where we should be at. How many communities like Fall River, you said there are a lot of them that have it? What's New Bedford Stabilization Account and Lowell's, and they have thirty million dollars?
So, New Bedford Stabilization Account, actually, we pulled that information. So, right now, New Bedford has thirteen million, Lowell has fourteen million, and Brockton has four point three. But their free cash, for example, Lynn has twenty-five million sitting in free cash, and New Bedford has twelve point six million sitting in free cash, and Lowell has fifteen point four million in free cash. And Brockton, so-
And what do we have in stabilization and free cash?
So, we have ten, at the end of, we have around ten million dollars-
In stabilization?
In stabilization. And our free cash was fifteen point five million this year.
So, we got more than that.
So, no, well-
We're in better shape than all those communities right now.
Lawrence was forty-three point two million in free cash, and Lowell was fifteen point four.
You want to get into the tax base of what those company, what those cities raise as well in, in, I don't know, and what the tax basis compared to ours?
So, all of these, Brockton, Fall River, Lawrence, Lowell, Lynn, these are all gateway cities in New Bedford.
I understand the gateway cities, but you know what their taxes per resident, it's a lot higher than ours. As you know, the residents and commercial rates are a lot higher than ours, a lot higher than what we are.
Well, so, we, we tried to pull similar data, so, again, the, the DOR income per capita is very similar in all of these communities. Right around twenty to twenty-four thousand.
What's the tax rate?
I did not pull the individual tax rate on these, but what I'm saying-
I suggest you do that, because you'll notice a big difference. But my point is, we're not in terrible shape. We're at twenty-five million dollars. We're probably, what was New Bedford again?
New Bedford had, similar, but they have a little bit more, twelve point six million in free cash and thirteen point eight million of stabilization.
Right, but they raised a lot more money, right? What is their overall budget?
So, they raised a lot more mon-
A lot more money. So, I think we're doing pretty good, considering that we raised less money, yet we're right there, we're there, we're in stabilization and free cash.
Yeah, and a lot, and we've, we've made some changes over the last couple of years to try to do this.
Hey, kudos, but we're there. You say we should be at thirty, we're not that far behind, and we haven't done anything. I mean, it's, it's not, we're not in terrible, horrible shape. And I'm not trying to beat up the budget, I'm not trying to say that, you know, this is terrible. I would like to see it done a little bit differently. And, and people spoke about this over and over and over. Diamond High School, watch out, Diamond High School, it's going to kill us, Diamond High School, oh my God. What are we going to pay in Diamond next year? Do we know? What's it going to cost us?
So, there's approximately just over six hundred thousand. We were originally told, you know, in December, it was going to be eight hundred and some odd thousand, and it's included in the assessment. We have a meeting later on Thursday again, because, you know, we don't have final amortizations from them. So, you know, there's a lot of assumptions being made. I mean, originally, they thought next fiscal twenty-five was going to be over two million dollars, was going to be the assessment, which has now changed, because they've just banned, they haven't turned any of the long-term yet. They will need to long-term start long-term.
So, what is it, what does, what does the change go from two million to what?
To, they, it was eight hundred and some odd thousand, then they had a premium that brought it down to just over six hundred and twenty-something thousand. But again, and then we also have the assessment with the students in there, which went down from the current year we're in to next year, but again, they could have students right up till October, that could then change that assessment.
Sure, so can our, our students as well. But do we have a line item in this budget twenty-twenty-five for Diamond High School?
Yeah, and it's, it's included in the-
What's the amount in that line item?
It's in the, the total amount in that assessment, it's four million. So, it's under the diamond, it's included in the four million seven seventy-eight sixty-three.
Four million seven seventy-eight, so it's roughly just under five million dollars. And when's that meeting, Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure they know today what that assessment's going to be, so.
Um, well-
When was the last time you spoke to anyone from Diamond?
We've been, we've been having continual conversations with them.
Okay, so when was the last time you spoke to anyone there? Yesterday, last week?
We've had some emails going back and forth as of recently, I could pull up my last meeting.
I'm just curious, you don't have to be, I mean, has it been a week or two weeks?
Um, there's been emails going back and forth over the last two weeks.
With specific to what the funding is?
Specific to the funding, specific to the reimbursement rate.
All right, I just want to make sure we stay in communication with them and make sure we get as close of a number as accurate as possible.
And, um, Mr. Oliver, I also attends their capital project meetings.
Okay. All right. Councillor C5, councillor Friesberg, do you have a follow-up?
I just have a comment to make about reserve fund and putting all AFSCME at two percent. I don't have a problem with putting AFSCME at two percent, because you know that they're going to come in and negotiate, and they're going to get at least two percent, at least. I don't think that they should be given less than that, because we have all sat here and said, "Our workers deserve to get paid better than they are being paid." Now, they all know it's two percent. If, what happens if it's three percent? Then you come in and you take money from the reserve to fill that. But I really hope that they do get a raise, because they deserve it. And, you know, it just, I know somebody that was working on a, on a weekend, and they work here, and they were working because the pay here wasn't enough, and they love their job and they want to stay here, but we've all said that. Mrs. Smith just said herself, at sixteen dollars an hour, it's tough to get somebody. Now that it's twenty, maybe she'll get, you know, get more people to want to apply. I mean, I know kids that are working at McDonald's for sixteen dollars an hour, and that's not as heavy as the work that they do in the park department. So, I think, you know, we expect a lot out of our employees, but I think you have to give people a living wage, and, and I don't think we do that. And when we have CPI, or we do, you know, a certain percentage, so if this group gets two percent or three percent, the manager up on top gets two or three percent. Well, two percent of forty thousand dollars versus two percent of eighty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand is a big difference. You know what I mean? So, I just, I'm just a shout-out to our employers who are working, and I don't have a problem with that being in there, because you know they're going to get at least two percent. If they're going to get one percent, then you're going to put that money, that money's going to come off the, the budget. But honestly, I feel they deserve the two percent, if not more. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right, there being no further questions, or councillor C2, councillor C3, I'm sorry, you haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, just real quick, thank you, Mr. President. Nancy, I know, I wasn't here la-, excuse me, I wasn't here last meeting, but last time you were here, we talked about a fee structure. I think you were thinking of using the school department template to talk to Ken Pacheco. Has that started?
It's just very difficult, because to have, to charge that fee structure, you need to be able to maintain what you're charging the people for. So, the conversation, what's happening here with this conversation, and I would be remiss-
Well, I'm just wondering if it's, have you actually started it? At least talked to any-
I've had conversations with, is it Blithe, the girl in the office? She's sent, I've had her listings sent to us.
Okay.
It is Blithe.
Blithe, that's right. That's good.
So, I have had conversations with that, but it's, it's very difficult. But it, what, the conversation that I've been listening to with, you know, this two percent increase in, in the AFSCME thing and the, and the park salaries or whatever, and this is padded and this is extra, and then in the end, I can't get three positions funded. We can put fifteen thousand, we can put, you know, six point whatever, whatever raises we were talking about, and we can put two percent for every AFSCME employee, and I can tell you that it's usually one and a half, one and a half, and I don't even remember seeing a two in a long time, but that's, I, I just don't understand. I would be remiss if I didn't say that. Why it's, why are we able to put this cushion, but we're not able to fund a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars to give us three more people? I don't understand it.
But I get the, I was just asking about the fees.
Yeah.
So, they have been talked about, discussed and worked, um-
Yes, but it's very difficult and-
So, when do you anticipate it happening?
I don't anticipate it happening if we can't maintain the fields that people, we're asking people to rent.
Okay. All right, I'm just bringing that up, because I know you brought it up at that meeting. So, that was one of your, I think it was one of the goals for the park board, park department, so it's not a goal anymore?
Well, I think until we can discover either premier fields that are turf and don't require as much maintenance, that would, the first field that I think we just discussed that happening to was Britland Park, because it would be a field that did not have to have the maintenance. We would be able to have numerous games on those fields without it having to be, you know, seeded or groomed or whatever. It's just the grooming machine that would be used. So, it would be a lot easier to do a field like that. So, I think before we bite off more than we can chew, I think we need to do it with one field, mainly maybe a turf field, and see if that works, because the maintenance and the upkeep or the manpower that would have to go in it to turn that field over day after day after day, we would be able to accommodate that with turf, not so much grass and, and loom.
Okay, thank you, are you?
There you have it. Councillor C2?
Yeah, just a couple more questions. Number one, Mrs. Smith, the two mowers-
Yeah.
Do you have them?
Not yet, they're, they're going to be purchased, from what I understand, Mr. Aiken said that we're going to get those, because I had to, I purchased my own the last time. They weren't reimbursed, so I do not have them, but my understanding is that we're going to be able to buy them.
How many mowers do you have?
Right now, probably about eight.
Twenty-five fields.
Councillor, I'm in the process of assessing whether we're going to move into the battery-operated type or the gas type. We've had a presentation from a vendor to assess, to see if it's a viable situation. We are getting a loner to be able to drive a zero-turn. So, we're in the process of trying to revamp and trying to move into the next age at this point, and that is one of the items that we're looking at, all battery-operated. There's major savings, and there's, it's better on the employee, and that's what we're assessing at this point.
Okay. And how long are these talks going to take?
It just happened about a couple of weeks ago. We had, we actually were able to touch, utilize, ride, we're able to do that, and trying to get together with the department heads to see what the assessment is from that presentation. One last thing, the, the loner that we are going to get, we're utilizing that at the cemetery. The cemetery is going to be able to give me feedback on the zero-turn battery-operated.
Who cuts more grass?
What was that?
Who cuts more grass?
I would say the parks cut more grass.
So, why wouldn't we try it in the parks as opposed to the cemetery?
Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith had that opportunity, we, and it was not presented, and she did not take a, a liking to the type of device, so I believe that was, that was where we were at.
I think there's concerns about the durability of the battery situation. So, we're going to basically use it in a small venue first before we actually let it loose in the parks.
Because the battery might not last long enough-
Yes, and I don't want to be stranded. Parks that go out in, in all different fields and whatever, with the cemetery, I felt that that was the best place to try to, try this out, because you wouldn't have to send, you know, the, we were told the battery may last six hours depending, so six hours is my total day. So, I don't want to be like running back to the, to the garage with no battery power. So, that was the conversation. It wasn't that I wasn't open to it, I was not a hundred percent sure that it was going to work for our particular department at the time, and if we were going to invest in this, I didn't want, I said, "Don't invest in two or three or four, let's invest in one, see how it works, see what the battery life is, and, and what it can do." Now, one more thing, while I have the floor, I have a question, because my understanding is, we have outsourced work that, from my understanding is, there are two groundskeeping people in the facilities department, and they used to maintain the fire department, the police department, Hunter Street parking lot, Cash Street parking lot. Now, it came to my attention that this is now being outsourced, and those positions are funded. So, I don't know, I just want to know, because that, that's what's coming back to me from my, my workforce.
When you say maintain, what do you mean by maintain?
Cut, cut and service.
Grass cutting?
Grass cutting. So, there are two people in that department. Are they doing that work? Is it being outsourced? And if it is being outsourced, then are those, why are those positions still filled? I mean, I'm looking to fill my positions as well, and we're, we're supposed to be one department, so I don't know if, how true it is, if this is true, but I, I mean, that's what I'm getting back. This is, this work is being outsourced, and the positions are still being funded. So, if we can look into that, that would be great, because-
Well, let's get an answer right now.
Did we ask Mr. Oliver? Sorry.
This is a personnel at a union issue, and I, I prefer we not get into it.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, so can we back up here? So, would you agree, Ms. Oliver, that eight, eight lawn mowers is not adequate to cut grass in twenty-five parks, medians in the city, and I don't even know what else, the park, the park board cuts grass like all over the place? Would you agree with that?
What was the question, councillor?
The eight lawn mowers are not adequate for the amount of grass that needs to be cut.
If, if the director has said that she doesn't believe that's enough, then I believe that at this point, but I'm still making my assessments. I asked for a cutting schedule, and that's what I'm waiting on, to make an assessment. I don't make assessments on this is beliefs, I'm trying to assess every single thing that we do prior to moving on anything at this point.
All right, I guess I considered my question to be based on what I assumed your expertise was. Twenty-five parks, eight lawn mowers, so I was asking more in that regard than-
But councillor-
I mean, I have one lawnmower, I have one lawn, but if I own ten houses, I probably have three lawn mowers.
Correct, but having a cutting schedule that shows the staffing, the, the locations of cutting, that's where I get my numbers, and that's where I evaluate, and I do my analysis. I can't do my analysis without seeing the proper schedule and, and the location. You don't cut twenty-five locations at one time.
Oh, no.
You don't, you don't cut ten at one time, maybe you do, but that's what I'm trying to assess at this point. But yes, if there's a need, we're definitely going to pick that up, absolutely.
Okay, back to the budget. Ms. Oliver, so would it be fair to say, somebody's total salary in twenty-twenty-four? Okay, now, wait, now, let me start over. This has nothing to do with, again, whether I think somebody deserves the pay, doesn't deserve the pay, if I think they're making too much, got too much, this has nothing to do with that. This is strictly a numbers conversation. So, somebody's total salary in twenty-twenty-four is forty-nine, seven sixty-five. Is it safe to assume that in FY twenty-five, their annual salary should start at at least that number?
Is it an AFSCME employee?
Excuse me?
AFSCME employee? Like, what kind of employee? Is it an AFSCME employee?
What's the title, councillor?
Is it a-
Um, it's a, it's a, it's a maintenance craftsman, but I don't think it matters whether it's AFSCME, not AFSCME. My question is, what, if I'm making forty-nine thousand, seven sixty-five in the FY twenty-four budget, I should be able to assume that in FY twenty-five budget, I'm going to make at least forty-nine thousand, seven sixty-five?
Well, councillor, you don't know if that was money that he made when he was working overtime, or she, I don't know who you're talking about, but if they make-
Longevity, holiday, snow stipend, clothing allowance.
Overtime pay in there as well, because some people, their salaries reflect overtime payment, that they're guaranteed to get the following year.
This isn't the only one.
Okay, just, if you want to say what it is, it's just-
Again, so the annual salary-
All right, so, okay, let's go right-
Can't go by that.
So, let's do it. Page one fifty-one in the FY twenty-five budget. I've got page one fifty-two in the FY twenty-four budget. In the FY twenty-four budget, this individual was at forty-nine thousand, seven sixty-five.
For the ending number, the total number?
Ending total salary.
So, that also includes longevity, snow stipend, clothing allowance, and tree stipend. What gets-
Yes, which is, which they're also received-
And so then the ending is fifty thousand five-
So, which, which-
Three nineteen right now.
Which is also listed in the twenty-twenty-five budget, the tree stipend, all those things have, haven't changed, right?
So, as of right now, I don't believe that, I was not made aware of any of those stipends being adjusted. So, the annual salary, the starting is where the adjustment was made. And then you still add those other things, so the ending salary in that position is fifty thousand, three nineteen in the twenty, that's been budgeted in twenty-five.
Can I go back to my original question? If my salary is forty-nine, seven sixty-five, with all those line items, which were the same in twenty-four as they are in twenty-five, the tree stipend, the clothing allowance, the snow stipend, everything's the same, so my annual salary, annual in twenty-five, should be the same as my total salary was in twenty-four? Is that correct? Should I anticipate if I was making forty-nine thousand, seven sixty-five, that my starting annual salary in twenty-five should be forty-nine, seven sixty-five?
No, it doesn't start, including the longevity, the snow stipend, the clothing allowance, and the tree stipend. It starts at, with, without those items.
I understand that.
So, I, I'd have to go look at, I'd have to go look at that particular person and that particular item and backlash.
So, when, okay, so somebody starts at an annual salary of forty-five, two forty-two, you add in all of those stipends, their salary goes up to forty-nine, seven sixty-five, right? So, that's considered their salary. So, next year, their starting salary should be that, I don't even know how to get to where I'm trying to get to at this point.
No, so you don't start.
All right, so this person's, so this person-
Can you let her answer, can you let her tell you how it starts, so you understand?
But she's not getting what I'm trying to ask for.
Well, maybe let her say what she wants to say, and you'll tell-
I want to try it a different way.
Maybe you should understand what she's trying to tell you.
I want to try it a different way, and then maybe she can clarify it for me. So, let's just do total salary. Total salary in twenty-twenty-four, total salary in twenty-twenty-five. This individual's salary went up five hundred and fifty-four dollars, one point one percent increase over their total salary last year. But if you go down one line item from that, the next individual's salary went up four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars, which is eleven point three percent.
Well, I can explain that, because that was one of the people that went from sixteen Well, I can explain that because that was one of the people that went from $16 to 20.
Okay.
So that's why his salary increased by so much.
But we've been hearing 2%, 2%, 2%, but yet the top, that number one.
But I think where you have to get the 2% is stay in this first column of annual salary and that's where the 2% changes, not this total salary. I think the annual, when you go right after their title and you go annual salary 45,969 for that craftsman person that you're talking about, that is their annual salary. And yes, if they were 45,242 in 2024, they should be the same in 2025, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, but if, except if they put the 2% in. So that's why it's that other figure.
And so again, and there's, so there's been things that have happened from '24 to '25 that happened where like you voted to increase certain salaries. There's other things that have been, have been negotiated. So all of those things happened throughout the year. So again, what happened at the, what we budgeted in '24, there's been things that have changed. So we start off with what is now the beginning, you know, and we, we did explain that we did the AFSP increase. But again, you had those other ones where you increased the salaries. I mean, we had to adjust that, we can't.
All right, so I guess it all comes down to, and I think it's been, it's been a reoccurring theme in these budget discussions, is that the detail we got was not sufficient. And some of, Mr. Akins made the statement, a lot of these salaries are mockers. They're not actual salaries, they're not the final numbers, they're mockers. Is that how you refer to it?
So I said, I said placeholders, but.
Placeholders.
Specifically with regard to the managers is what we were talking about at the time because I hate to be taken out of context.
Yep.
The, the managers who will negotiate there's any sort of increase, if any, because not everyone, you know, could get with them. You can't count on that, right? You, you assume that maybe once a year, there's a conversation, but you know, that's not certain depending on the financial situation in the city. That's going to happen in December or January. And so there's a placeholder, assuming that there might be some increase, we want to be able to afford it. That's, that's all. With these, there is a 2% assumed, knowing that any union worth their salt with good negotiators is going to come in asking for, you know, who knows, 10, 10, and 10. That's not what they was asking for, but, but that could be the start. And maybe the city comes in looking at, you know, half, 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 and then we try to meet in the middle. You don't know where it's going to end, that's ongoing. We'll, we start this in January and February. The hope is that we're pretty good at understanding where it's going to end up based on what the city can afford and what the best thing is for our employees. So they are placeholders to some extent, but they're educated and they're not willy nilly. They're not just taken out of the air. And I think for the most part, you know, the 15,000 one, that's, that's an excessive outlier. The rest, and you got the chart that I sent today, the majority of those are very, very close to what that percentage is likely to be if I were to guess right now. Right around that 3% CPIU. If I were to guess where the AFSP contract is going to end up, it's in that 2% to 3% range at the very most, considering that most years it's 1%. Again, not commenting on what we've actually agreed because we do have an agreement in principle, but it's not before the council and hasn't been voted by the AFSP body, but just sort of speculating if they start here and we start there, we meet in the middle and it's traditionally where we are plus the commitment by this administration to try to pay our folks a better wage, which they try to do each year, so.
All right. With that, I yield.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, Nancy, thank you for coming down.
Thank you for coming, Nancy.
Next, we move on to community service planning. Thanks for coming down as well, Al. Councilor in seat four, Councilor Koby.
Thank you, Council President. Planning Department, the question I have, just again, it's something that's been brought up. I discussed with Councilor Vice President Pereira. Just looking at the mission statement of the planning department to advance the city's economic development and enhance the quality of life of residents. So it's an important job that's been left vacant for some time now. We had a recent resignation in Mr. Perano. Page 156, his salary is 72,000, was 949. And we have a very capable, of course, Dan Aguiar, who really does yeoman's work, but I just question whether or not he just has the, the ability to, you know, to carry on this very important position, so. And that is a stipend, I would, I would call it, $27,214. So just doing a quick math, if you combine that, that's over $100,000, at least 103. So which would definitely fund a city planner with benefits. I believe, who was our last city plumber, planner would go to, back to Kenny, right? He started out at 85. Of course, I don't know if we're going to attract anybody at that salary, but it's definitely in there. I mean, so, and I know the, when you put the budget together, Bridgette, we, you probably didn't know that Mr. Perano was going to send his papers in. So the question is, I'm not, I'm not going to place a condition on my vote, whether or not I'm going to vote for the budget based on this, but is, is there an intention for the administration to advertise for a city planner to lighten a load of Mr. Aguiar, who's out all the time, with, with the new streets that have been put in, with the sidewalks that have been being put in all the time. So he's stretched. And, you know, what, what's the plan for that, for that position? I think it's important, like Council President Pereira mentioned, the, the purchasing agent, that's another one. I mean, I, from my understanding, it's required by state statute. We haven't filled that in some time. So that, that's a question that I have for, for this position. And I think it's, it's very important that we do have a city planner because it's a long question, but common as well. A lot of the questions that have been asked over the last couple of days during the budget hearings is planning, planning for parks, capital plan for parks, capital plan for this, capital plan for that. Councilor Gooddean always states it, that we, we, we request over and over again that. So that, that's the office that would really put that all together, so, Mr. Akins, please.
So I can't, well, first of all, Mr. Aguiar does bear a tremendous burden, but he carries it so light that he almost floats away. It's really remarkable. And with regard to the work he's doing, it's, it's really, I mean, we're incredibly fortunate to have him. He brings a level of expertise and frankly, a level of institutional knowledge that I don't really know where we might find anything to compare to it. If he were to ever leave us, and he's given me his assurances that that will never happen. With regard to advertising and securing a planner, there are some kind of ongoing, I don't want to say conversations because it feels like, it's like an episode of The West Wing. All we do is sit around all day and have conversations, but it's, it's not that. But we, we often refer to that. It's more just a conversation with Mr. Aguiar as to what his department needs, whether there's any talent in-house that we can use to lighten that load and what that looks like. You know, Mr. Perano filled an important role for a time and moved on to become a planner. And I can't sit here and say we are definitely going to advertise for a planner, but I will say that if we can identify the right person, we are absolutely open to hiring a planner because you're absolutely right, the money through different kind of variations within the budget, we would have to come before the council for the permission, is there. And I think it would certainly be the right person. We've got a great partner for Mr. Aguiar because his expertise is, is that deep.
Sorry to interrupt, to stop you there. So if we advertise a position at the salary with the combination of those two positions, we advertise that we have no obligation to hire someone. So are we going to advertise for a city planner? And that's the only way really you're going to get a, an idea of what's out there, who's going to apply. It may be an individual that is phenomenal. And I would suggest to you that there's not many gateway cities with all we have going on in the city right now, all the development and everything else, there's probably, I don't think there's a gateway city without a city planner.
Right.
We're the only one really. I would, I would like to do the research for that, but it'll take some time, but.
Yeah, critically.
But we could advertise it. We have to advertise it and see what's out there.
Critically important position. I can't sit here right now and represent to you that we will advertise it because the mayor has not given me the authorization to, to do that. I just don't, I'm not saying he says no, but we just haven't made up our mind. I will tell you that in the last two weeks, I was approached by an employee here who has a close relationship with a planner in another city or town, who, you know, based upon the recommendation, might be interested in, in looking at this city where frankly, because of the reputation of Mr. Aguiar and because of the reputation of what the city is starting to do and some of the directions that it's moving in, that it hasn't moved in the past, it's a person that wouldn't have considered coming to Fall River before that would now consider that, which is, which is really exciting. We're able to attract talent that otherwise might have just been scared away by kind of false, you know, rumor and, and reputation, but rumor and reputation nonetheless. And in addition to that, I know that there's, there's other folks that have relationships in the, in the industry that have also brought to my attention planners that are potentially interested. So there's, there's other ways that we might attract, but I will absolutely, I can guarantee this. I will bring it to the mayor and I will explain to him that the council is genuinely interested in us advertising for a planner, that they believe it's important and that we could support Mr. Aguiar by doing so.
Mr. Aguiar, I know it's above your pay grade, but you see a need for, to free you up and work with a qualified city planner in that office?
So for the record, my name is Dan Aguiar. I'm the Director of Engineering and Planning for the City of Fall River. And I state that due to the reorganization that took place when I came here. When I came to the city, there was a city planner, there was also an assistant city planner, two positions that the city was unable to fill. I was hired as the city engineer and conservation agent. No cross activities with the planning department. So to be clear, I am the city engineer and conservation agent under the engineering budget line item. Because of my past work history and expertise, when we had Mr. Kenny that left and our assistant planner was given the position of planner, not at my advice, however, took, was the case, soon left because she could not handle the position. At that time, we advertised for both positions, city planner and assistant planner, two positions. It was decided through this reorg that I could take on those planner responsibilities by hiring a qualified, excuse me, assistant planner and having them work towards the direction of becoming a planner. Planners just don't appear. At that time, when Mr. Perano came on, it was under the guise of taking on assistant planner responsibilities, working towards in a number of years, taking on full responsibility. Now, if, if we want to go back and attempt to hire a planner, I think we also need to look at hiring an assistant planner as well, the two positions. So what you don't see in this budget is a full line item for city planner at 90,000 and a line item for assistant city planner at 70,000. What you see is me covering the position of planner for seven hours a week.
So you're telling me that the, the point that I'm making and I think all the, many of my colleagues are probably thinking the same way, I hope it's valid. We, we have to do something in that department.
Well, if, if you feel that, if you feel that the department isn't performing.
I didn't say that.
Well, I, I think you are.
Can it get better?
No, but I think you are. Because if it's performing beyond how this department has ever performed for less money, I don't see why that would not be something to be heralded.
I didn't say that, my friend.
Because understand completely, and this, and this will be the case, and we've had these discussions.
Yeah.
If we move towards the direction of hiring a planner.
Yes.
My duties in the planning department cease. I don't walk to that side of the building anymore. I stay in the engineering department. So all of the expertise that I bring to this city in planning ends. My, my duties in the planning department end.
Well, it's still a colleague, would be potential colleague of yours that you would work with on a day-to-day basis.
No, two different departments, planning and engineering. That's why I said when I came here, it was engineering, specific duties to city engineer and conservation agent. There, there was never a cross, let's call it a cross contamination of departments, where the city engineer and the planner worked on the same things, only in an engineering advisement role to the planning board. So zoning board of appeals, planning board, those would no longer be my responsibility. They would now be the responsibility of whoever the city decided. And I brought this up to Seth, at any point in time, and the city wants to move in the direction of hiring a planner and an assistant planner and, and staff the rest of those positions that are empty, I have no problems with that. Don't pay me a seven hour a week stipend, I'll go do my city engineer's position. Without, without quarrel, no issues.
If I can jump in just for a moment, I don't want this to turn into an ultimate.
No, no, it's not my style anyway, but I didn't imply that and it seemed like I, I said something that offended you and that, that wasn't my intention.
Well, it does offend me.
Wow.
Because it, because it, no, because it is, it appears to be a reflection.
I've seen a lot of that tonight.
No, but it appears to be a reflection on, on what I've been able to get done in that office over the last two and a half years. Clear, clear reflection of that.
No, it's not. I'm not going to go back and forth with you, but this is the first time I've seen this piece of you, but your personality. I yield, I yield.
Okay.
Seth, you can make a comment if you want to.
I, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, I do, I, I tried very hard to make sure that any of the input from the council gets to the mayor because I think it's important that the mayor understands, you know, what the, you know, what the will of the council is because that's, that's an important part as, as the elected body. But when I say that there's a conversation going on as to how to fill that position, that's it. That, what's happening, you know, right there is that, you know, we have an incredibly capable person who's doing the work, right? And in fact, while he was doing the work, trained another person so well that he himself became a planner. The proof, you know, if there's ever a pudding that the proof is in, that's, that's the pudding right there. And I hope Mr. Perano, who I'm sure is watching, doesn't get offended by being called the pudding, but it's neither here nor there. The bottom line here is that, that is the conversation, that right now, things are going really, really well. Mr. Aguiar is incredibly effective, as I said. It's just a question of, you know, what do you do if Mr. Aguiar isn't here? Like what do we do with that position? Because you have to plan for the positions you have, not just the personnel you have in, in that moment. And that's always the, that's always the tension, so, anyway.
Thank you. I just meant, I, I think from listening to what Councilor Koby was talking, he didn't mean to offend anyone. He just said that the city has always had a planner. And when the city has a good planner and a good engineer and a good department, it's, everything runs well. When a city has a planner that may not fill that criteria, which I think is prior, I want to, I want to say, no offense to anyone that was there prior, but I think some of the plans we've had in the past weren't as good as the ones that were there prior. So when he came in and brought his expertise, that's wonderful. But I also think the city should have a planner and an engineer that can work on those positions. Because as you said, when Mr. Aguiar leaves, then we're going to have to find another individual that can do engineering and planning to keep up with this pace. It's going to be very difficult. So, and who knows what the planner that comes in, what type of expertise they have. So I, I wouldn't take it as an insult to anyone that's filling that role for seven hours now and saying, hey, look. But at some point, I think the council is right, that we should be looking at a qualified, very good planner to help assist the city. I don't think it's a disrespect to anyone and I, I don't know why someone would take it that way. The council, I think, was right on point. Councilor in seat five, Council Vice President Pereira.
I agree. I said it at the last meeting that we had, the city needs a planner. We want to revitalize the flint. You've got all this stuff going out in the waterfront, that there needs to be a planner. In your engineering department, what are the other monies that are there? What else are we paying for?
Are we talking the planning budget now or the engineering?
She said engineering.
Engineering.
Right, but.
What, who are you, I'm, I'm trying to, because you're here doing both.
Currently, I have.
Just what are the, like, how much are we paying Byron Holmes?
Byron Holmes.
Is he still here? Point of order, we're on planning currently.
He's not here?
He's coming in both departments.
I know, but we're, we need to follow the order that we're in, please.
Well, he's doing both, so that's why.
We have planning questions, then we go to engineering.
Councilor, do you have any questions for, whoa, hold on. Community services, planning, community maintenance, engineering. You want, you want to yield so that anyone who has specific questions to community planning?
Yeah, but I, you know, I just wanted to add.
That's fine, we'll just, we'll do, we'll do it the council's way.
All right, I'm going to, I'm doing planning.
Okay.
But I would add to Mr. Aguiar being upset, I think that he's done a great job.
Absolutely.
Balancing to hold everything together, but if we get a planner, now I'm just engineering. Jim Hartnett and Byron Holmes work together all the time. You know, you work with other people too because he does have expertise and other people do. But that's what happens because when, when Mrs. Alman came in, she wasn't doing purchasing. That's not on her job description. Now she's doing purchasing. Mr. Aguiar came in and he was doing two, engineering and conservation. All of a sudden, now you got tossed to planning too. And that's not right, but it is what it is and we have to bend to help one another. With that, I yield and then I'll go back to engineering.
Councilor in seat two, Councilor Deanna.
Good evening. I actually only had one question. On page 186, there's an individual who's on two line items with two different salaries. Are they doing two different positions or do they only have one position and for whatever reason, it got separated?
I'm assuming it's the head administrative clerk?
Correct.
Yes, so it's broken up because she has a step increase in the middle of the year.
Oh, okay, okay. That was basically, that was the only question that I had. I would like to say that in all my dealings with you, I've experienced nothing but professionalism. An expertise that Fall River is really lucky to have. And you're right, you've done everything very conservatively. Your, your budgets, everything, you, you save the city as much possible, as much as you can. And, and you hold everybody to the letter of the law. You know, we have so many times we complain, people don't follow ordinance, people don't follow ordinance, we don't follow this. You're right down the middle and I really appreciate that. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Poson.
Hi, Mr. Aguiar. So back to the question about the head administrative clerk. So are those both one FTEs each or should that be one FTE regardless of step increase or not?
It's, it's a combined one position.
Okay, so the total FTEs of the department should be four? Okay, so the total FTEs of the department should be four, not five? Because that particular person, though listed twice, should be one.
So we have two clerks, assistant planner, I believe that's all that's listed in planning, and myself.
Yeah.
As interim.
So yourself.
Because the licensing clerk is is listed separately.
Correct. So you have yourself, the head clerk that's vacant.
Yep.
The assistant planner, which is vacant.
Yep.
And then this individual that's listed twice.
That's correct.
Both an FTE each.
That's correct.
So it should be that way?
Should be four.
It should be four, okay.
I did not prepare this document.
That's okay, that's just, that's what was confusing, right? So that shouldn't be an FTE, that's just a step increase. Keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat six, Counsel Paty.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm going to just, I want to comment here, because if you recall from my colleagues, we had a meeting recently that Mr. Aguirre was here at with Mr. Fioler, and we were talking about redistricting or that whole district change that we had down the waterfront, right? Mr. Aguirre came down here and was phenomenal in his presentation, acting essentially as a temporary city planner, speaking about ordinances and zoning, and was a tremendous resource to us as a body as we were able to make a decision. And if we listen to ourselves talk right now, we can't talk out of both sides of our mouth. What do I mean by that? We can't sit here and say that we have a diamond high school that's coming on the books or a waterfront that needs to get developed and developed well, and say we have all these future expenses coming on next fiscal year. And when we have a department that's before us right now, that's saving us us maybe two-hundred-thousand dollars a year with benefits for twenty-seven-thousand dollars, we should be celebrating, is what we should be doing. What this administration's doing with planning and engineering is far superior than any community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I would put the planning department up right now and the engineering department up right now against any planning department in any part of this state right now and would blow them out of the water. Nobody is doing the development on our waterfront. Nobody is able to do the redistricting that we've done within the departments to help developers succeed. Nobody's going before the planning board and not caring about what political consequences might come, but doing the right thing, that's exactly what this council needs, and honestly, we should be urging the administration to do more of this with other departments. So I got to tell you right now, as currently before us, we shouldn't be having any discussions about having a planner. The person that's here is capable of doing that job and do it well, and and the these are the conversations we should be having. We could sit here and talk about how the parks need more people and how we might need a planner or assistant planner, but the way things are going right now, why would we break something like this? These are the, these are the conversations that we should be having with the purchasing department, we should be having these conversations with other departments. How can we consolidate and reorganize to save taxpayers' money? And if we can have two departments with one person running it, who has far more experience than anybody running these departments, would make us spin if we're in a room talking about planning and ordinances and zoning and 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 different kinds of classifications that we know nothing about. So we were very complimentary of the current acting temporary city planner, when he was down here talking about the waterfront and how we had to expand that zone so that we had enough affordable housing in the city, we were all, we were saying how wonderful of a job that he did. And and for us to sit here and advocate for a city planner, when this department is running lean, this department's running lean without a question of a doubt, this is what we should be celebrating. We shouldn't be advocating for the administration that we need a planner. I I I don't see how that that's even, that is, that's probably, that's that's an injustice, and I can see how a department head would come down here and feel disrespected when he when he works as hard as he does with the resources that he has to do his job. And and this is the kind of stuff that we should be talking more about in budgets, not let's add more people, when we don't, I mean, a city planner is going to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year plus. Ms. Aiken, would you agree with that?
I would.
An assistant city planner, in your knowledge in municipal government, what do you think that's at, eighty?
Eighty, eighty-five.
Right. We're not, we're not hiring a paralegal, we're not hiring a a clerk with no disrespect to what they do. We're hiring, we have an educated person who who's an engineer, who 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 should be running this department, and he's doing a fine job doing it, and this is what we need to celebrate.
Mr. President, can I make a comment, please?
Sure, absolutely.
I think part of the problem here is that in a budget like this, where this position is listed as temporary city planner, I think that that's a problem.
I agree.
When you look at at the organizational chart that was put together with City Administrator Aiken, myself, the mayor, the rest of the administration, when I came on, and I refer to myself as the Director of Engineering and Planning, so to oversee both departments, and it was intended, when that happened, to bring on an assistant planner to provide assistance to me as the Director of Engineering and Planning, and that's what we had implemented and has been going very well. Do I miss not having Mr. Perano around in only a week? Absolutely, one hundred percent. So wholeheartedly, we need to provide or come up with filling the role of that assistant planner. If this is the organizational schedule that we plan on following, if it's not, then then we circle the wagons and come up with with a different scenario, so.
So it's your belief that we should have a Director for Engineering and Planning always going forward and just have two assistants?
No, I do not.
Well, there you go, that's the point the council was making, and so was the council and myself, that's the point.
I have to clarify.
Yes, you do, you do, I apologize, no, no, Brad, so, hold on, I apologize, I just want to see what is, since he wanted to make a comment, I just want to know what his belief was, so Brad, you can finish.
Let me finish my comment, so.
Okay.
When we discussed how I felt engineering and planning should be run, it should be run with a director of both departments, an assistant planner, planning department, ultimately, potentially, an assistant city engineer to cover the end of the engineering part, grand scheme of things.
High overview, you're right.
That's, that's the way that, that's the way that the real world works.
Yep.
But we don't need a department head for engineering.
Correct.
A department head for planning, you have one, and you create different levels of management in a system where we don't have one hundred clerks and one manager. There's no middle ground and no room for improvement and no room for people to move up. So ultimately, five years from now, when the budget allows, would I like to see everything under one roof? Absolutely, and I thought that was the direction that we were moving in. So because of this being two separate departments, technically, two different locations in the budget line item, it's impossible to put everything into one position right now, whereas is what it should be.
So, Mr. Aguirre, your vision for planning right now, today, where we sit today, is what? If you if you were to summarize, I know there's a paragraph written here, but.
Yeah.
As the, as the, as the person in charge, the Director of Engineering and Planning, what is your vision for the planning department right now?
Well, for the planning specifically, would be exactly what we've been doing. Staff-wise, I think we need an assistant planner, one hundred percent, because there are day-to-day dealings with this contract, that contract, with all of the opera dollars that we've been spending, we need somebody that deals with the day-to-day things. Engineering.
We're not going to go to engineering, because we're on planning right now, so we'll finish. I know he's asking you, and he shouldn't, I shouldn't ask you a question of engineering, because Counselor in seat seven is going to get very upset if we get off to the engineering.
So, so, so in planning.
Mr. President, with all due respect, we have an agenda to follow, so I'm going to stick by that.
I agree, Counselor, I'm telling not to ask engineering questions, I'm I'm backing up your plan, the agenda, Counselor.
I'm not asking Mr. Aguirre an engineering question.
So, planning.
Yeah.
Chart would be a Director of Engineering and Planning, subset planner, two clerks, call it a day. That's what we would need for staff, which is what we have now, or what we did just have when Mr. Perano was here.
Mm-hmm.
And moving forward with everything that we've been doing, the way we've done it for the last two years.
Yeah.
Which again, I think, as you stated, has been supremely efficient.
Better than it's ever been. So I yield for now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat D, Counsel Simpson.
I just want to, thank you, Counsel President, I just want to say that this is exactly, this department is doing is exactly what I'm hoping that Mr. Olivera does in his department, cut the fat, rearrange departments, I think sometimes we can be top-heavy, and you are a perfect example of combining and doing it proficient. So I think you are absolutely doing, I I think we've done this in maybe a couple of areas, we're doing it with the auditor department as well. So I honestly think that this is brilliant, you've done a great job, you're doing it well, and I think that other departments, you've paved the way for that, and you can see that if it's done correctly, and it's the correct department head with under the correct leadership, and that's the big thing, right leadership, right skill set, round peg, round holes, you are doing it absolutely correctly, you are saving the city a ton of money. Hey, in ten years, if we have to go back, you've saved the city ten years of a lot of money, so I think this is exactly where where I like to see more things headed in that direction, so with that, I yield, Counsel President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat three, Counsel Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Aguirre, good evening. So is that, what the, what you're talking about, is that in the reorg now, or do we have to like, do we have to tweak it a little bit?
It is in the reorg now.
Right, for the, the Director of.
In the organizational chart.
Yeah.
That were presented two years ago, that's how it was generally said.
Got you, okay.
But for budget purposes, it doesn't show up that way. We operate that way daily.
Okay.
In in my office, when you, when you would walk up to either counter, you see the same staff, you get the same level of expertise and the same amount of attention, whether it's the engineering department or planning, they both independently deal with separate things, one hundred percent. But as one group, everyone, even the clerks, there is cross-training that has gone on, where someone in the engineering department has the ability and knowledge to cover what's going on in the planning department and vice versa, because we don't have enough clerks just to sit around and wait for someone to walk in the door. When someone comes to the counter, whoever's there needs to be able to provide a service, and that's how we operate.
Yeah, no, I get you. So, and I, when I, I just got on the council, I didn't, I didn't really know you, I've got to know you now, and I think, I mean, I'm very impressed with your knowledge and what you, what you've done, and little I know, because I've just been here a short period of time, and I think you're probably right about the assistant city planner, and I don't know why, I mean, I wouldn't want to disturb anything that's going on right now, I think you're, I think what you, what Mr. Pont talked about as far as, as far as the redistricting down at the waterfront is is fantastic, and I think that's going to be a, you know, a gem for the city, and I, you know, with you behind it and the other people that are helping out, I I don't have a problem with that at all. So, I mean, I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I want you to keep doing what you're doing, and I I don't have a problem with it at all, so I I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat four, Counsel Kibbe.
Yes, you settle down now? All right, you're smiling, okay. It's no slight against you, I asked a question.
Well, it's no intended slight.
No, but I, I'm sorry you interpreted that way.
But you can't tell me how I, how I respond and feel about the comment.
Yeah, but I just have to say my final piece on this, you know how I feel about you.
Absolutely, that's why it was very surprising to hear this.
I just asked a general question, in terms of that department, what the needs potentially are, and the answer you gave to some others after is the answer I was looking for. So, you know.
But it probably could have been a question that you would have asked me previously.
We'll have a conversation tomorrow, I'll give you a call.
Yeah.
Like, you know, when I do call you, you're right there, but it's just, I mean, I'm a counselor, I have a right to ask a question about a department and a legitimate question, and I got the answer, but, you know, if anybody who knows me, I don't deliberately try to rile people, my questions are made in good faith, without any, any slight towards anybody.
Didn't say it was deliberate.
If I offended you, I'm not going to say sorry, though.
That's all right.
I'll, I'll say sorry, and I call you tomorrow, I will. All right, all right, Ms. Aguirre?
Certainly.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat five, Counsel Vice President Peraro.
Yeah, I, I like what Dan said about him overseeing planning and engineering, because one person alone can't do it all, and for people to sit here and say, you know, we have collective treasury, merge people together, merge people together, if you work forty hours a week and she works forty hours a week, he's not going to be able to do eighty hours worth of week, a week, he's not going to be able to do it, because it's humanly impossible. But that scenario of having two assistants, one in planning, one, one in planning and one in engineering, I think that works, but for you to just do it all yourself, Dan, I think you're a great guy, you always answer my calls, we always, you know, get to the bottom of whatever, but it's too much for any one person.
I didn't say anything.
With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to make something very clear, when the council raises their hand, I write down their name in the order they raise their hand. If the council doesn't think I see them and they raise their hand again, and another council that raised their hand in between, when they raised their hand once or twice, I don't care who speaks, if you raise your hand, you're going to speak, in the order, I write it down. So when the council says, oh, he called on her, she just raised her hand, I saw her, that's childish, it's foolish, and we don't need it in this chamber. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Repose. Not going to put up with it.
Also not going to be spoken to like that either.
Not going to put up with it, Counselor.
I'm also not going to be spoken to like that, just for the record. I'm going to stick to a budget question. Mr. Aguirre, we could, please, how many members are on the Board of Appeals?
Board of Appeals, there are five and one alternate.
Okay, so the alternates get paid less than the permanent members? Because I'm looking at the line items, I'm seeing nine hundred, and then some of the Board of Appeals is seven fifty. Are those the alternate members? I'm just curious for that.
Give me a second.
Page one eighty-six.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
So Eric Kelly is the Board of Appeals alternate and gets paid seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's set by ordinance.
Okay.
If you'd like to change it, we can.
Just was wondering why they were uneven.
Yeah.
You mentioned you didn't prepare this document, who did?
The Finance Department.
Okay. So, Ms. Almond, I'm just curious, was it just a math error on the end there where the first one, two, three line items there are, don't match the beginning, I'm assuming, just a Excel problem?
I questioned the same thing, why they weren't nine hundred, I I didn't know if it was for a specific reason that they weren't.
You know, I don't, I'm, yeah, it was Excel, like rounding.
Yeah.
You know, so.
That's fine.
So again, like, you know, we we get information from, from the departments, and then we go through it, and then it gets, you know, put into this document.
That's fine, I was just curious. And then lastly, Mr. Aguirre.
Counsel Repose, just, just so you know, the documents that I submitted, they're all nine hundred.
Thank you, sir. And then lastly, just the vacant Board of Appeals position, has that been filled as of yet?
We, we have a tentative member that has shown interest, however, they currently sit on another board, so before we can attempt to move them over, we need to fill the position that they're in. And where it's just an alternate position in zoning, where he is currently needed due to a lack of filling of another space, he's, he's been stuck in that position for about two months now.
Excellent. Thank you, sir, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you, there be no further questions. Move on to community maintenance and engineering.
Now I can ask engineering?
Absolutely.
Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President Peraro.
Okay, you want to go first?
No, I do not, I'm good, I want to go to the restroom, actually.
Somebody's in there, but, it's okay, there's a line there too, sorry.
And I'm the child.
Technical consulting services for forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Tell me what that is.
What page?
It says cost of survey and whatever.
Yeah, so, as you know, and we had, we had raised this last year.
Right.
As you all know, the city has adopted a practice of being very aggressive with the acceptance of streets. With that comes along a costly surveying plan and legal description for the streets that, that we take in. For instance, Mohawk Drive and Gatehouse Drive.
They're coming in today.
I'll be for you tomorrow. The preparation of just those two street plans was $15,000. So, this line item is what...
What page are we on?
Uh, page 159.
159, Councilor.
So, you do those plans?
No, no, that gets sent out, is prepared by a professional land surveyor. That's, that's been the practice. So, what's, was, this engineering department in the city of Fall River does not prepare any reportable survey plans. Not the type of engineering department that, that's done. That's all done by consultants.
Okay, is that, is that $45,000? Is that what Mr. Holmes gets, who used to be our engineer?
No, 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 he, he does not. Mr. Holmes gets, gets paid nothing from the budget line items that, that you see here.
Where does he get paid from?
So, when, when I came on, the city has two engineering consultants. One is by the name of a company called GCG. And they do all of the preparation of bid documents and construction inspections for all the roadways that we build.
On bids, are you talking about bids?
All of it. So, anything having to do with street reconstruction gets funded from Chapter 90.
Okay, right.
Which is outside of city budgeting. That, that's money appropriated from the state.
So, they get it out of Chapter 90 money?
Chapter 90 funds design and engineering for our roadway construction projects. That's an allowable expense. Mr. Holmes also does work for the administration of the Chapter 90 program as well. That was in place when I came here.
He's been here for...
That has not changed. Well, he was, he was here as the city engineer.
Right.
Then when he left, we had J.R. Frye, and then there was a Chris Gallagher as well. At that point in time...
Chris Gallagher was our engineer?
Different Chris Gallaghers.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I remember him now.
He was only here for a short period of time.
I remember him now.
So, at that point in time, Mr. Holmes was utilized as a consultant through Chapter 90, to review the Chapter 90 documents for payment and all of those.
Well, he had to be utilized because he has the seal.
No.
And those other ones didn't.
Nope, it has nothing to do with that.
No?
Nope, just has to deal with his level of expertise and information with knowing the Chapter 90 program.
Right.
So, they've always kept him on board.
Okay, that's the only thing I was looking at, was that, other than that, I really don't have...
The only line item salaries
Any questions, what is it?
Is what you would see, which would be the, the four employees that are currently under the engineering department.
No, that's a, that's a, a good department there, it's hardly, I don't know how much longer we're going to have Mr. Sylvia as a junior civil engineer.
I, I keep asking him to keep staying on another year, another year, so fingers, fingers crossed. But again, something you also don't see in either of these budgets, and, and you'll see in planning, for instance, and I'll refer to it only the same way. Over the last year, working with the council and through ordinance, we've been able to increase the fees. So, you don't see revenue in, in these budget reports, which is a very important thing. Which, which it would help provide a look at, okay, if engineering brought in $100,000 last year, because I know it's before the council tomorrow.
Right, tomorrow.
When we, when we look at the increase in fees from '96, you would then understand an anticipated revenue increase as well. So, while we've been able to minimize our expenses through salary and different types of things, we've also worked towards increasing revenue, which is a positive, you know, in, in any department.
It is a positive. I, I got a call today from someone about Stafford Road, how finally that was done, and now they're doing the, the last piece. But they said, you know, there's already four cuts in that street. If there's emergencies, we have to do it. So, sometimes I don't think people understand, like when they did Robeson Street, two weeks later, there was a, a cut. And I called and asked you, why was this cut? And it was a water pipe broke, because sometimes the heavy equipment on the street causes an issue. But I think it's important that people know that, not that we're not coordinating, because I know you are coordinating with the gas company and the water department, but...
I can tell you one person's job I would never take in this building, and that's Paul Ferland's. Because, because what he's bought into is an infrastructure system that you can't see. It's below the ground.
Right.
So, every day it's a call, we've got a water break here, we've got a sewer break here. And he just informs me because he's digging in a street that I'm responsible for. So, when we look at a five-year street, for instance, we do hold, whether it's in-house or an outside contractor, to a higher standard for restoration of that roadway. But, understand, no one goes into one of these streets, other than an extreme emergency, without coming before the council for approval first. We had Kennedy Street, I think, at the last meeting.
Well, I think that sometimes, when you have a street less than five years and they can't go into it, the problem that the council has, at least for me, I'll speak for myself, is that when somebody comes up and wants the street open, they've already been given a building permit, they've already built the house, now they have to hook up to water and sewer. Because nobody at planning or at zoning says to them, this street is less than five years old, you're not going to be able to cut into it.
Not since I've been here.
But since you've been there, it has changed, because we have had less people coming here. So, but we had talked about that, and, and I know that that, now that's a little bit, if it's an emergency, you have to do it, I mean. But, I don't have anything else. And I, I'm glad we did a lot of streets and people are happy, it's good to do streets. But sometimes we repair a street, and then people decide that that looks like a drag strip. And they keep going faster and faster. I mean, Eastern Avenue's got a problem, and people have to slow down. There are many communities that are now putting those little strips across, just kind of slow, slow the traffic down. But, thank you, Mr. Agia. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman C-7, Councilor Pozzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Agia, question on the, the on-call stipend?
Yep.
I noticed on 159 it mentions Inspector on-call stipend, but that stipend is assigned to the head admin clerk, is that essentially the same person?
That's correct, and I, I had emailed CFO about that. It should be one line item down for the inspector, is the on-call stipend. It did cause a, cause a bit of a ruckus in my, my department when they read this online and saw who was getting the stipend and the other one did not. So, not only did someone new get it, the person who was getting it, wasn't getting it.
And we obviously, we all know that it was one line down, and obviously they're not going to get paid based on, you know...
So, so the total FY25 total salary for the second person on that list should be 44...
And when you look at page 159, you will see the line item for other stipends, and it does reference Inspector on-call.
That's why I was confused, because it didn't, didn't match the person. So, the total FY25 total salary for the head admin clerk should be 44, 329? And then the... Now you're going to make me...
No, 40...
Well, it would be this 44.
44, 129 plus 200. Right? I know it's logistics, but I just want to make sure my numbers are right, yeah?
The total is correct.
The total is correct, okay. And then for the third person, what is the FY25 total salary for that individual, please?
48, 617, plus 1,000, plus 33, 49, plus 900, plus 2,600. Whatever that comes out to be.
I have 56, 466.
56, 4... Would you have, Mr. Aiken again?
56, 466.
466, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, sir. And then, Mr. Agia, to the second question I had, you don't have a city vehicle, correct?
I do not, I get a stipend of $1,200.
Stipend, okay, that makes sense. Does, does anyone in your department have a, is, is there a city vehicle for your department?
Inspector Silva does, and that, that's funded through DCM, it's actually a letter to DCM.
Gotcha, all right.
So, we're very thankful for that.
He's the one that drives that rail.
Excellent, I yield, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman C-3, Councilor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Agia. So, you talked about the, when you're, when the city's going to repave a city, a, a street. And, so how, like, what, what's the priority, what, what street's a priority other than others, when that, when that happens? And the list comes out, and the summers, they usually do it in the summer.
So, we have a, we call it the Christmas list, right? That everybody wants their streets paved. So, maybe 50 or 60 streets that people call, complain, there are some streets that have been on the list for, for 10 years, that we just don't get to. When we get that list, we, we perform an analysis of, one, has the gas company been in there yet? Because they, they rip up all the streets. So, if the gas company hasn't been in there yet, we're not even going to look at it, because they're going to be there within the next few years. So, that automatically takes them off of the shortlist.
Yeah, that was my question too, with that, because it does happen occasionally. So, to, to negate that from happening, you, that's what, that's what you guys, that's what you guys have done if it...
Yeah, so, we have, we get the list, I speak with the gas company, they tell us what our two-year plan is. We meet, these are the streets that they want to do, they change it often, all of a sudden they want to do a new street. So, we work with that, we work with the Water and Sewer Department to check, have you done water recently? Have you done sewer recently? Have you had a lot of breaks? Should we go do water and sewer first, before we look at repaving? So, we, we look at all of the things that are under the ground, or that should be under the ground, before we qualify a street. Then we might have a list of 20 that meet all of the criteria for us to, to deal with. We then look at, are they spread amongst the city? Because you want to make sure that everybody gets the same amount of attention. Then we look at the dollars and cents, and we can, we perform preliminary analysis for cost of each, and then figure out which streets we can do this year for how much money.
Okay.
So, there is a process.
Yep, no, absolutely. Just sometimes you don't think there is, because it, but you can't control what the gas, if the gas company has to get in there, they have to get in there.
Yeah, but what we've, so like New Boston Road, for instance, from Eastern Avenue West, to almost to Oak Grove Avenue, the city had done a number of years ago, not that long ago, then the gas company just came in and, and redid it. So, when we allow the gas companies to go into a street, that's a five-year street, we require that they repave the whole street. So, we basically start from scratch. So, it's always nice when they're, it's in the fifth year, and it's in the last year of our five-year qualifying, and they want to rip it up. Great, then it starts all over again for five years for that street, so, and we get a new street for that, for that section.
And what goes into the acceptance of a street?
So, the process...
And we don't do, we don't do it ourselves, we, we get involved in it, but...
We, we all get involved in it. The, the process is that any 10 registered voters, not, could be nobody on the street. 10 registered voters submit a form to the clerk's office requesting acceptance of the street. That immediately comes to the council. Council then refers it to the planning board for recommendation. So, with the planning board, with myself, we look at the street, we discuss, what kind of shape is it in? You know, are we, are we taking on a burden? Then comes back to the council, the council, under that recommendation, makes yes or nay. Then they send it to the engineering department to have the street and the documents laid out on paper, recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Now, since I've been here, I think there's been one street, and I've said this to the council often, I don't think we should be accepting all the streets that we accept. What we accept is headaches and problems. Because as soon as a, a street becomes accepted, everyone on that street, the first question they ask is, when are you going to repave it? We shouldn't be taking a street that needs to be repaved. We just shouldn't be, you know. Accepting a subdivision road that's brand-new and complete, that's easy, because we've, we've looked at everything, we've inspected it all, it's a brand-new street. But we often inherit headaches, 300-foot little dead ends that are full of potholes and the gas company's dug up. Now, they're on me, when are you going to pave this street? And I explain to them, well, we're going to put it on the list, the 10-page list of all the other streets, and we'll, we'll provide an analysis every year, and we'll get to it when we can. So, when you accept streets, it puts a burden on my department as well. And that's why, two years ago, that line item for the $45,000 for the roadway acceptance stuff, I believe it was only 25. Within year one, you guys had sent, I don't know, six streets down to me, and we were depleted. I had to hold streets over to the following year, in order to be able to get the monies to come in. So, with what we had budgeted for this year with the 45, and what we've just paid the last bills for Mohawk and Gatehouse, we were pretty much on par. But we can control to make sure that we're under the 45. If we end up getting through a process where, where we're at $80,000 for street acceptances, then, then we don't accept the last three. We let it sit and we wait, and, and we don't do them all at once, because that's when you end up getting in a hole. We'll do two or three, pay the bill. How much money is left? Okay, we can take on two more, and that's the way we look at it.
And, there's four in your department, four employees?
Four total employees, yes, including myself.
Is that enough?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I think, I think it is. When, when we have the ability to have, again, we're in the same corner of the, of the universe, right? So, it's easy to have staff that can provide services to each department when needed, covering vacations or sick days, things like that, so. I think it's, I think it's enough. If it was considered one entire department, even easier.
Okay, all right, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Did be no further questions? Thank you, Mr. Agia, for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to move on to Administrator Services. We'll have the city administrator, human resources, management information system, and law department. Please all come down to the table. As the councils are called down, you can ask your questions to anyone at the table if you like, just so that we can, in the interest of time, address them while they're here, instead of doing across the board. It's all part of Administrator Services. Councilor C-7, Councilor Pozzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. To human resources, one of the comments in the page 95 regarding the medical exam fees, I noted, I noted that it says, "We may be able to charge the water department for their exams, which wouldn't require as much in this line item." Is that going to happen?
Something we've discussed internally, I know, in the past, we've never covered the water department's exam, and we've always covered the water department's exam fees. But I think as we looked at possibly charging some of the enterprise funds for their direct services.
That was going to be my question.
So, Mr. Ferland was gracious enough this year to cover all of the water department exam fees.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Do you want us to stick to that one, Mr. President?
No, you can ask anyone that's at the table, any question, this way we can just, you can go right down, whatever questions you have, this way...
Excuse me, Mr. President, but can everybody state their, state their name?
Yes, please state your name and what department you went to, the people at home know who we're talking to, good point, Counselor.
Nick McAlini, Director of Human Resources.
Tyler Antea, Director of Management Information Systems.
Alan Remsey, Corporation Counsel.
Thank you. To MIS, Mr. Antea, hello, sir.
Hello.
A few questions for you. First is on page 99, is the three line items for computer equipment. Can you break, a few, there's a few questions I have. So, can you break down what those three line items are, and then explain the reductions?
So, it does seem to be missing here, but those are sectioned out for city hall, fire, and police.
So, the first one's city hall?
Correct.
Second one's fire?
Yep.
Third one's police?
Correct.
Okay.
And I just did the reductions, as I didn't need to make as many purchases as I did this year. Obviously, with this big Munis bill that I'm sure you're all aware of, I tried my best to make cuts where I could. It was really all there is to it.
So, then, obviously, my next question is, obviously, that drives, it's no longer paid for the grants, that's increased, the massive increase explains that. But you noted the Office 365 license, I remember last year asking you the question about some offices were running, like, Office, I don't know, 2003, I don't know whatever it was. Are we all good with that now? Are we all 365?
365.
Oh, that's excellent, good news. Can you break down those four line items of software, other than the first one, which we know what it is? So, 2, 3, and 4, what software is that?
So, the first software line item is what I would consider software used by all of the departments within the city, city hall, fire, and police. The following three would be city, fire, and police, which are softwares exclusively used by those, sort of to just break them out a little bit more. I do have the lists of softwares, if you would like to see that, but for security purposes, I didn't really want to post it out there.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I guess I'm just curious, maybe to the CFO, is there a reason why those are not better labeled? Or is it just how it works?
Well, so, in, yeah, so they come in, they, that's part of Munis, and we are working, and that is one of the things that our new position is going to be helping work on, is realign Munis, and so that the object codes will be uniform, so that we can, you know, pull things across, and, you know, getting our descriptions better within Munis, because, again, the budgeting used to be done outside of Munis, and we're starting to utilize Munis to do budgeting in. So, we, there's a, a lot of lines to go through to then, it's a, it's a pretty big project.
Fair enough, no, I just, good to know.
I agree, we, we've been, we've been talking about it, we want it, so that it's a lot more self-explanatory.
Saves some time, right? All the way around. Mr. Antea, back to the budget line items here, so the next one is rentals and leases.
Yep.
What exactly does MIS rent and lease currently?
Those would be the, the Ricoh printers, so that includes the leasing for them and the maintenance and printer ink for any of the printers across city hall, police, and fire.
So, city hall, that's the recurring theme here, city hall, police, and fire. And then, professional services, can you touch on that a little bit, please?
So, most of that is the managed, excuse me, if you're aware of that, MTSI?
Yeah.
Pretty much all of that falls under the services that they provide.
I know last year, obviously, you were just coming on, do they, are they even in the building anymore as much as they used to be?
They are still in the building, they do a lot of the stuff behind the scenes, the software and updates, maintenance that they do, really doesn't pertain a lot to the onsite that they are. Their contract is actually coming up this fiscal year, and I do have a bid out for new managed service provider, just to make sure that we're getting the best rates possible for that. But, for a city of this size, a managed service provider is almost necessary, that the amount of work behind the scenes that you need a dedicated team to take care of, really can't be done with just a small and house team.
No, well, I know that, I mean, my background's the same as yours, so I, I understand that rationale. When is that contract expiring?
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
So, in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, okay, good enough. Okay, and then, I noticed, I noted that the city website, where is that? Oh, the city website line item itself, so old website removed from budget. So, the 7205 is... So the seventy-two oh five is, is the, is that the maintenance for the new city website?
So that's just the hosting cost, uh, that they charge for us.
So was the, I'm sorry, was the nu, the old city website more expensive essentially?
Um, so we were actually paying for both at the time for like a transition period kind of thing.
Okay.
Um, now that the old website's completely gone, there's only one there.
That makes sense, okay. And then, the last one, I think this is to CFO Alman, the office supplies, they're obviously just, one is in, one is out, so, can you explain that?
I think that was, uh, my error, I think I put it, put it on the wrong line when I was, uh, entering it, but-
And that's, again, yeah, part of, we want to realign, yeah.
Yeah, the whole thing, gotcha. Thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, seat six, Casa Panti.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to go to law, please, um, page one oh three. I first off want to, um, ask, um, and also commend, uh, under, under other professional services, looking at the most recently, uh, recent quarter update, Mr. Remsey, it appears that your, your department with other professional services, uh, it has come down tremendously. I, I see you have a forty percent drop-off, and it doesn't really look like you're going to probably spend unless something crazy changes between now and the end of the year, all of, all of that, which is probably the reason that came down, I'm assuming?
No, um, actually, don't give me enough credit, I mean, you're giving me too much credit. Um, I think some bills are probably getting entered in, lawyers sometimes get a little lazy, and then June hits, and we get a lot of bills. I have noticed a significant number of bills coming in, so I think we're, actually are going to be very close to that three sixty-seven for outside litigation this year. Um, the main, um, factor in that is, I've been talking, I think, years, probably all four years I've been here, the, uh, police-involved shooting on airport roads, saying, once discovery hits, it's going to get expensive, it's hit. So, it's been a very expensive case for this city to date, and, so, uh, we'll be very near that, that three sixty-seven. But the, the one thing I hope everybody understands in my budget, it is essentially the same budget, it's no real increase, but there's, there's one thing to note, is, um, we talked for years also that I wouldn't be able to hire somebody for sixty-five thousand dollars as an assist, full-time assistant corporation counsel. Uh, we've hired Attorney Ken Fredette, and what I would, requesting this council to approve is to increase that line item by fifty thousand, so it'd be at one fifteen. That same fifty thousand would be reduced from outside litigation, so, the idea is that, yes, we're going to hire a full-time assistant corporation counsel at a fair rate, but reducing outside litigation costs by that same fifty thousand. So that's why the reduction is for, because I've added in for the assistant, full-time assistant corporation counsel position.
But your salary shows one oh two.
Not sure why that came across like that, um, it, it should be one-ten was my expectation.
One-ten, one-fifteen, what is it?
Well, the, the one-fifteen would have given some, a little leeway as far as if there's any kind of increases that come in January, but the, um, the, uh, one of the agreements I had with Attorney Fredette was, when he came on, his effective salary was a hundred thousand, because I had fifty thousand left in my budget, but he started in January. So over the course of the year, you could see how that would project to one hundred. Um, but one of his agreements to come on, that I would support, and the mayor would support, and we would request this council to support a salary of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for Attorney Fredette.
Are you going to redo the appropriation order to reflect that?
Um, so, I'm sorry, but I, I wasn't aware of that.
If, if need be, it can be taken care of later, it's, it's, it's better to do now if it's not too much logistical effort, but there are contracts that, um, expire in January, so I do anticipate in January probably having to before this council because of just new contracts that come up, and then we can fix that, that point if it's too much trouble now.
So, um, one thing that I've always had conversations with you about in my prior tenure here is the amount of outside legal, uh, that you've had to essentially sub out a little bit. Um, have you, do you feel that in your budget this year, that you've brought more of that in-house and you're subbing less out?
Once Attorney Fredette came in, yes, very much so. Um, you know, the, the costs that have gone up this year, I mean, it, it's the same budget from the prior year, but we're going to spend more of it this year. It's only because these discover, the discovery has really taken off, I mean, um-
Discovery on one specific case or more than one?
There's more than one, but it's one that's taken the bulk of it. Uh, we've had, I mean, to give you an example, I have a list here of the, the two biggest costs. Um, there's one law firm that's approximately a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, but they are covering six cases for us, um, two of them involving fatalities, and one's the police-involved shooting. Um, the other is Clifford and Kenny, that's about ninety-five thousand, that's higher for them this year, but a lot of that's because of the fire arbitration.
And they, and they do our collective, for everybody, they do our collective bargaining negotiations.
Correct, and they don't do a single lawsuit, so there's nothing I really farm out to them lawsuit-wise, but they, they, they've been, union negotiations, collective bargaining, and we had the, the fire arbitration was expensive.
So how much are you planning, because it's not really broken out here, that other professional services kind of just like one number, how much do you budget, uh, in this fiscal year for outside legal for collective bargaining? Did you say eighty-five thousand?
No, I mean, it's not, it's not that specific, as I said, uh, Clifford and Kenny, our bill as of June fifth, um, their, their total was ninety-five thousand and change.
I've always asked this, um, do you feel that the city would be better positioned to have another associate corporation counsel or an associate paralegal aspiring attorney, maybe out of law school, whatnot? I'm probably not doing collective bargaining, but have you ever thought about bringing that in-house? I've always, always wanted to see that happen, and it could provide more resources to your department.
Um, it's, personally, no, I mean, I do see both sides, and in fact, I've had a conversation a couple of years ago with the, uh, city solicitor of Taunton, and he finds it, uh, a very difficult to do that in-house, because we represent our police officers, we represent our, our fire department, I represent them on, on many things during the course of the year, to then be on the other side, it's a little bit more difficult. It's almost like in a, in a sports realm where, you know, you have an organization like the Red Sox saying that a certain player is not worth that amount in arbitration-
Right.
-and then, and then, you know, the day, once it's over, then you're best friends, and then they want to go out on the field and perform. It's a very difficult position sometimes, I think, to have the inside counsel, which is representing all the employees of the city of Fall River, then go in and say, "We have no money for you."
Okay, so where are we going to find in this budget, um, fifteen thousand dollars to make sure that the assistant corporation counsel can get a hundred and fifteen thousand and not one-oh-two?
As I said, I, there are two options, I don't, I'll leave it up to-
Yeah.
-the CFO, what is easier to do, as I said, it would be, it's fine with me to let it ride until January, and then we can make the fixes there, because we'll have some-
Well, you're going to just come back to us for a transfer, unless you can do-
Right, exactly right.
Unless you can do it under administrative services, you can transfer it between salaries within your department.
So you're telling, the, the, you have a contract that's coming up in January?
There is an agreement in place with Attorney Fredette that with this council's approval, I need the council's approval because it's an appropriation. The mayor would support it, my office supports it, I'd like to, I'd like to hire him and give him a contract once his budget passes for one-ten.
Okay, but right now, it's before us at one-oh-two, so-
So I wasn't, yeah, again, this is unfortunately the first time I'm being made aware of this. I think we, I just want to confirm that-
Go ahead.
That the, you know, mayor is-
Yeah, mayor's in support of, of this, um, the, the one thing I will say is that the Clifford and Kenny bill is, is extraordinarily high because of the arbitration-
Sure.
-fire arbitration.
Yep.
Uh, probably by a third, uh, if we're, if we're honest. And, um, the way that collective bargaining happens, um, when I came in as city administrator, all of the contracts were open, um, we settled a bunch of them, we'll have several next year, we'll settle two this year, so we have them on a schedule now, and, uh, Director McAlini and I do all the collective bargaining with Clifford and Kenny. Clifford and Kenny, I think, is, um, you know, we're going to probably keep them involved with police and fire, uh, but we haven't involved them at all without me, uh, and it's been fine, um, you know, I have enough-
But don't, but, but with that, though, don't you feel that all the bargaining units are back up for negotiations this fiscal year in twenty-twenty-five? So don't you feel that you would be re, uh, I don't want to leave the department short, I mean, I've been critical of the law department's finances in the past, I think this is a pretty lean within this department, but don't you feel that, um, that going back to the bargaining table with pretty much every union in twenty-twenty-five is going to reopen the outside counsel for Clifford and Kenny or whoever you use?
Uh, just with regard to fire and police, uh, you know, that's the, those are the, because basically every fire fighter and every police officer is their own separate, um, is, is basically their own separate salary code, uh, because they have so many different variables, that, you know, those are incredibly challenging CBAs to negotiate and to draft. Uh, the rest are actually, you know, Teamsters, um, we've done, uh, mostly, just actually in-house, uh, for the most part, Ask Who We're Doing In-House, um, Superiors, we've done largely, uh, in-house, so, um, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just not-
I think there'll be a reduction, not, not an eradication, a reduction.
I very agree, I've had this conversation with Seth numerous times-
Yeah.
-where, you know, the bill's getting kind of high, are we still needing them, are we still using them, and they've done an excellent job, and I don't mean to suggest Clifford Kenny's done an excellent job for the city, um, but I do think, I've seen a significant reduction in the last four to six months, and I think that trend will continue where that bill should be reduced in, in fiscal twenty-twenty-five.
All right, the, the person who's the assi, uh, the assistant corporation counsel is currently getting paid what you're saying is in this budget of one-oh-two, correct?
He is currently under a contract, a six-month contract that pays him fifty thousand dollars.
When, when did the six-month co, uh, contract begin?
In January, his exact date was, I wrote, I wrote down your, January twenty-fourth, but please, it's January third of this year.
So he has a six-month contract, so at the end of this month-
That's correct.
-he is, he, he's no longer a contracted employee within your department-
That's correct.
-unless he gets paid his extra amount of money that he's duly noted. So I think it's probably in our best interest for, um, if the council so chooses, um, to have a revised appropriation order.
So I would, I mean, I would recommend moving it from other professional services and moving it up into the salaries, just reducing other professional services and increasing his salaries. It's eight thousand we have to, we would move, and then it would, it would keep the appropriation-
But that's what he already did with his, um, proposed budget down fourteen percent that was included in, in, in that, wasn't it? What, what, if, if I take, if we take, uh, eight thousand dollars out of other professional services, that's going to give him eight thousand dollars less to work with this fiscal year?
Well, again, if we were going to come down and ask for another appropriation when he negotiates in January-
That, is that, that's where you would be coming out of, uh, other professional services to make that payment?
I think, right now, I think it makes sense to do it like that.
Okay, so why, wouldn't it just make sense to get a revised appropriation order, or the council can just-
Well, that wouldn't change the, yeah, I mean, we'll, we will change that, but I'm just saying that's where we would move it from, so in total, it won't change legal services, but we will, I, I can revise that.
I see what you're saying, so you want to leave it just the way it is, and then you'll end up doing it in-house within salaries? You're going from expenses to salaries, so you need the council's-
Correct, that's what I'm asking you for, so I would just change the appropriation by eight thousand on both those lines.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying, we're saying the same thing, okay. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C A, Councilor Simpson.
Thank you, Councilor President. I, I feel like, well, first of all, Counselor Remsey, I want to commend you. Again, I appreciate the fact that you are, um, taking money out of the consultant, putting it here to fund this, I think that that position is very warranted of a hundred-and-ten and should be so, and, um, I'm all about that. So, I just feel like there's a communication issue, like, once again, here we are, um, we're sitting in front of us to, to approve the budget, and I've got the contracts that were just given to us, um, Mr. Fredette at a hundred-and-ten, it looks like as of July one of this year, we can negotiate his salary, what should be happening, and then now we're talking about January, I just, I just, it's, it's very disheartening to me to sit here and hear, well, I never heard that, I don't, I don't know that, so there's, there's clearly some type of communication issue when the budgets are put together, I don't know, I don't know, I, it's just very disheartening. That has to be fixed, because if we're confused, I know I'm confused, going back and forth, I just, just can't imagine what the public is seeing, so, um, I, I would definitely agree to that one-ten salary, I think it's very appropriate, I, I like the reorg in that department, I think it's needed, and I wish we had that before us tonight so we could approve that. With that, I yield, Councilor President.
If this is going to be a problem, I have a very lengthy analysis I can give for Attorney Fredette, I don't feel the need to waste everybody's time, uh, unless there is an issue, but I, I do want to note, because, you know, it's a hundred-and-ten, it, it's a lot of money, I get it, it is actually below, um, market, you know, I have a comparison to Bedford, uh, New Bedford and Brockton, and I do want to point out, and I think sometimes the fairest way to look at a legal budget, because what we don't know is what the claims and judgments are going to be any given year. And, you know, if you do a comparison of Fall River, Brockton, New Bedford, um, some of them have insurance thrown in and things that are thrown in their budget that's not in mine and vice versa. Um, but I've looked at it as best as I could to figure out, to try to compare apples to apples, and I think the best way to do that is you strip out claims and judgments, so for example, Brockton had in their budget, you know, one and a half million for judgments, so you, you remove that from their budget, um, if you remove, my budget's five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for claims and judgment, remove that, and let's remove the three-hundred thousand I see from New Bedford's. So I think, you know, given a clear comparison, Fall River, if you take out the judgments, it's eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, that's the legal department. Um, Brockton's is one-point-five million, so, almost double, and New Bedford's is two-point-two million, almost triple. Uh, and this budget's very lean, um, I've held off on hiring a full-time assistant corporation counsel as long as I can, Attorney Fredette is a wonderful fit, he brings about thirty years of legal experience to the city of Fall River, um, civil litigation, municipal law's a little bit new form, but he's eager, he's willing to learn, that's actually the only other addition I had is three thousand extra for training, because I want him to go to as many trainings as he can, I, I think he's a great addition to my office, and I hope you support him.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
May, may I, she's, I'm sorry.
I absolutely will be supporting that, and you've done a great job. With that, I yield, Councilor President, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C four, Councilor-
Yes, to my point, to your point with Attorney Fredette, he is a, he's a very, very competent attorney, trial attorney, um, very, uh, I can't say enough about him, I've known him for, uh, at least twenty-six years, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Akins will attest to the same, same thing, he's just such a quality individual and a hard-working, um, attorney, so, I was, I was really happy when he was brought on board, and of course, yeah, I'll be supporting that when it comes across my desk, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C five, Councilor Sefra.
I, I really don't have any questions for, uh, human resources, I think Nick does a very good job, his staff, very accommodating, same thing with MIS, uh, some of the people will tell me, "Oh, if I have a problem with my computer," Tyler's there right away, I just wish that we had one page, Tyler, that said events happening, and that it was a calendar, and you could see all the things happening in Fall River.
Yeah, the, the limitations of the, the city-
Well, yeah, because we don't have a tourism director to be able to do that, but Mr. Akins has promised me that they will figure out in this budget-
All right.
-a way to get a tourism director.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, you didn't say that, was I dreaming?
No, I said I would talk to the mayor about it.
Oh. Oh.
And that I would express to him how serious you were about the tourism director and how important-
I think we voted on it, on this council. And I remind him each time I see him, perhaps you'll have better luck than I, um, but, you know, we're looking at that. The only issue that I have with law is that as a counselor, I wanna know, how many lawsuits have we settled? What are we paying people? I put in a resolution for that, and maybe we have to go into executive session. But I wanna kinda get my, my handle around that, because I think that it's not as bad as people believe it to be. Um, and I would just like to know that. Other than that, I have had the opportunity to see Attorney for Debt work in my previous life, and I think he's an awesome attorney. And everything that I've asked him for or questioned him, he's great at research and calls you right back. So kudos to him, and I have no problem, um, you know, with him getting that additional money. Other than that, I really don't have any, uh, questions. I do have, uh, some dreams for what I think I would like to see in the budget changed. I'd like to see us getting at least one carpenter and one electrician pull the money together. I would like to see one more person in traffic-
Councilor, we still have other people that are gonna come down, we have one more after this, so.
Oh, who else is coming down?
Um, we have insurance and pensions.
Insurance and pensions.
Oh, um, I'd like to see one person in traffic. I'd like to see cemetery and trees put together. And I'd like to see, um, Chris get that position, he's been doing them both. Again, as my colleagues to my left said, you have people that can do two things at once. That would be a good fit for him. I'd like to see another building inspector. I'd like to see a purchasing agent and an assistant planner, assistant engineer. That's my wish list for the future. I think the budget is very lean, it's only like eight hundred and eighty-five thousand off of, uh, what it was last year. Um, and I don't have a problem with money being in there for stipends. I mean, for negotiations, we know that people are gonna get raises, and they deserve them. Um, but, you know, so far, I've gotta say, I'm pretty happy with all the departments and the response that I get. And I'm in this City Hall a lot during the week, and I get compliments from constituents on how well they're treated here at City Hall. And that's something I wasn't getting before. They would criticize the way they were spoken to by employees or whatever. I'm not getting that. I'm getting people talking about how helpful people are, and I think that says a lot for the city. And I, I truly appreciate the hard work of all the employees at City Hall, um, and that they truly care about the city, and it's, it's really good to see. With that, Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, I just have a question. Instead of going into executive sessions, is there any way you can make your way up to the Law Department, and then he can tell you what the lawsuits are and this way? 'Cause you're the one that wants to know.
Nah, because he's not telling me, he wants to give me a sheet with numbers, that's not what I want. So if it's an executive session, you can all hear it.
I'm not in favor of executive sessions, and I'm not in favor of knowing what those costs, there should, something that should be discussed.
Maybe I'll have Seth go with me.
You can have your own executive session.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any, Councilor C two, Councilor D M.
I mean, that's what I think.
What was the actual CPI in, in FY twenty-four?
Three point five percent.
Three point five.
I thought it was a little higher than three point five, was it three point five?
Three point five.
The only reason I ask that is because it was budgeted at two point five.
Last year?
Yeah.
So we-
You underestimated last year.
It was trending down, and then it went back up.
Okay, yeah, because if you look, if you look to the FY twenty-four budget, all the CPIs were two point five.
I wanna say the last two or three months of the year was spiked it.
Is the year before that, was it seven point something?
Yes.
Just seven?
So again, like, that's part of budgeting, is, you know, you just do-
Part of me, part of me saying that is I can actually reconcile and, and bring myself, 'cause when I see a little bit of an increase, we're gonna use you as an example, 'cause you're up.
I appreciate that.
Hey, um, so I'm back to the annual salary is higher than the total. But when you consider the CPI was only at two point five, it would make sense that you would start with a little bit of a bump. So, at least the people with CPIs, I can understand it and justify it.
Okay.
Obviously, I'd like, in the budget, more specificity and, and, uh, things a little clearer. Like, for instance, with that thirteen thousand dollar on-call stipend, that needs to really thoroughly be explained. I get we got a verbal statement, but, all right, so that's off track. I just wanna address, make one more comment. So earlier, there was a discussion about the stabilization fund, and how much money is in it today versus how much money was it in years past? And in years past, we only had two hundred thousand. I just wanna point out that in years past, we didn't have ARPA funding either. We didn't have ARPA funding to plug holes in a budget. We didn't have ARPA funding that we could invest to make more money. You added, what'd you say, fifteen million this year because of?
No, not fifteen million. So we've added, um, there was about just over three and a half million, um, for twenty-three. And we'll probably close out around over four or closer to five million in investment income this year.
Right, but part of that investment was because we had the ARPA funding.
So that, that is, that's a very big part of it, and we've also taken other strategies to, um, hold departments accountable, where the city is not acting at, like, fronting so much money and then waiting a significant amount of time to get reimbursed from, from different, either grants or, um, you know, for capital projects. So we're, we're holding, um, departments more accountable with cash flows on projects. So, again, like, we don't, we wanna be able to make, like, have the money working for the city, and not where we're pushing it out and we're so thin that we're not able to invest money either.
But again, I think in part, we didn't have that advantage.
Exactly.
So we were like treading water every year.
And so when you have an opportunity, I think you should take that opportunity and, and put it to work and do what's best for the city, and help put us in a better financial position.
I agree, I agree.
So, and that's, and that's why, you know, things were removed and, um, capital was u- capital projects were used for ARPA, to try to help put, like, help set us up, at least so that we can spend the next couple of years trying to get, you know, not, we don't wanna go backwards.
No.
I think that everybody here remembers, and we all, I mean, we've looked at it, you, you lived it. I don't think we wanna go back to that. I mean, I think we wanna go forward and do what's, and have, like, good financial sound policies.
No.
And again, it's no fault of, it's just, that's what happened, and, and it's, you know, it was, it was over periods and periods of time. This didn't just happen over one or two years. This is like twenty years of, you know, this, a gateway city falling into that. So now we had an opportunity, and we should keep moving forward with that same conservatism and, you know, putting things to work that we can put to work.
No, I do agree with you. I just, I just wanted to make that point, that, that's what helped us-
Of course, and we haven't tried to wait for that.
That springboarded us forward, so to speak.
Exactly, and so we, you know, and again, that investment income is, is, you know, returns back and it'll help us in years to come.
Just a quick comment, uh, Councilor Pond actually asked a couple nights ago, what's your plan for ca- for capital projects? And the biggest part of the plan, to the extent that there is one, is a healthy stabilization fund. And the reason that can be part of the plan is that with a healthy stabilization fund, there's actually the possibility of generating interest from the stabilization fund that you can actually use to fund your capital projects. Uh, and your capital, you know, your, your trucks and your, you know, durable goods and that sort of thing. It's, it's on a very small scale, but there's actually a guy named Charlie Munger, does anyone know who that is? He's one of the founders of Berkshire Hathaway. And he used, he was, he died, that's right. And he used to give a speech all the time, which is save a hundred thousand dollars. He goes, do whatever you gotta do, you know, make coffee at home, take the bus, whatever you can do, save a hundred thousand. And if you can do that, then you can generate income from the hundred thousand, you can reinvest the hundred thousand. Like, it's always, it starts, and, you know, CFO Almond is essentially doing that. She's trying to create a stabilization fund that allows us to then not use the fund, but use the benefit of the fund, the interest from the fund, the revenue generated by the funds, to then do the things that we always used to borrow before. Uh, and we won't hopefully need to borrow in the future. That, to me, is the, is really the most structurally sound plan that we have, and that's, that's all because of CFO.
And we all talked about, you know, we, you know, we don't wanna keep increasing borrowing. So we, we put, you know, we've slowed that down significantly. We've used ARPA funding, I mean, the mayor committed, you know, funds to the NAGL auditorium, which, you know, we would've been having to borrow for. So we're trying to do all that, and yes, ARPA, ARPA funds did allow that. But we would be foolish if we didn't take advantage of that and put, put the money to work. I mean, I know other communities did not put this money to work, and who got more ARPA funding than we did and did not invest their money the way we did.
Okay, thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C six, Councilor Potty.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, what kind of interest rate are we getting right now in our stabilization account?
So the stabilization account, um, can also invest in the legalist, so that it's a combination, so it's not just a flat interest rate. So, I mean, we can get you the details on that.
I'm just curious, like, are you looking at five, because interest, we, to what you said, uh-
It works when interest rates are high.
That, yeah, this, this process only works if interest rates are gonna stay in the area that it's at. Now, there's no way, in my opinion, and I'm not anybody anywhere, who will believe that we're ever gonna get back to a two or three percent interest rate for a very long time, unless inflation totally drops, and that isn't gonna happen. Um, even with a change of president, if there is, if that does happen, I don't see interest rates going back to pretty much zero. So, um, in, in the, in the case of where we're at today, if you have twenty million dollars in stabilization, and you get five percent interest, it's a million dollars a year. Now, I like where you're going with your philosophy of reinvesting that. Now, that million dollars could do us quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not saying that's something that we would use for, you know, consistent operations, but year over year, I mean, I remember when the prior administration got a million bucks from a landfill, it was like, oh my God, like, we just, you know, won the lottery or something.
Yeah, but that was one, it was, yeah, it was done.
Yeah, it was done, and, and so we just gotta hope that the interest rates remain where they're at.
So again, I, obviously, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball.
Of course.
But everything that I've been paying attention to, and every, you know, professional development I've gone to, does not see, you know, basically, the treasury notes coming down below like four to five percent in the next couple of years. Um, they don't see mortgage rates coming down below four to five percent.
Never gonna happen, never.
So, not at least for a few years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at least we know, we feel comfortable that we're gonna be able to generate a decent amount of investment income if we stay the course.
But what kind of investments, uh, on that does the city do on an annual basis in terms of getting returns on investments with interest rates, CDs, or anything along those lines?
So, um, we have not, um, locked in any money in CDs, 'cause we have not had to. We, we've, um, negotiated with our banks, we're getting, um, you know, anywhere from like four and a half to five and a quarter percent just on, on money markets that are fully collateralized, or, um, FDIC with diff insurance. We have, um, about thirty-four thousand that's in US treasuries, which, I mean, you can't get any safer than that.
Nope.
So we were, you know, we were able to get into US treasuries, um, early last year. So we got in it at a very good time.
And you're doing all that money management yourself within your-
I'm doing that money management with myself and our treasurer, and we also are, we use, um, Rockland Trust. And we are also using, um, my God, I just forgot their name.
Bay Coast Bristol County Savings.
Well, we have, those are regular accounts, um, as soon as that comes to me, I will have to access.
Yeah, no problem, I, 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 I-
It's another, like, local municipal, I mean, municipal, um-
Right.
Investment firm that's widely used amongst, you know, most, all, like, almost all the municipalities. And the name just escaped me right now.
They're not, they're not out of Sweden, are they?
No, they're out of Massachusetts. So again, we, we have, we have stayed, so there's another, you know, I mean, we, there's another whole program called Intrify, where they take it, they sweep the money out, and they invest it all over, and we have not participated in that. We, um, we wanna know who, where our money is and, uh, what banks it is. So all of our money is within Massachusetts banks that are, have rock and mortar in Massachusetts.
Okay, what, remind me that number of money that's gonna be in stabilization at the end of the year, or going into next year, rather?
Um, so we're actually working on closing, like, all of our projections right now, so I don't have the exact dollar amount that we plan on-
But you're expecting to use two point three of, of twenty twenty-four?
We've already, we've already accounted for that.
Okay.
So, again, we're like getting down to the wire with our projections and getting in conferences and-
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, but I think you did say earlier that we were roughly around twenty-five combined free cash and stabilization.
Well, so we started out with fifteen, you know, of free cash. Um, we've, we had to give schools two point, or just about three million dollars of that. And then we had some other small adjustments.
But, so, is it safe to say we're roughly fifteen and eleven, or where are we, what are-
So no, your fifteen is now, um, reduced, and I don't have-
So it's about eleven if we give out four? I'm just trying to get a number more or less where we're at.
Yeah, I'll get you an ex- yeah, I'll get you an exact.
'Cause the comparisons that you made to the other communities, I think we're in fairly decent shape.
Yeah, and I, and again, I don't know what they've utilized out of their free cash in, you know, in the current budget.
All right. Any further questions? So everyone at the table, free to leave, thank you very much for coming down, appreciate it, keep up the good work, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor C seven, Councilor Potty.
I had two questions, um, I'm assuming she's answering insurance?
Well, wait, are you talking about the next one, insurance? Okay, so we're just gonna take about these guys, and we'll have, I'm assuming she's answering insurance and Seth as well. So just gonna wait for them to leave.
Fair enough.
Okay, now we do an insurance and others, pensions. Councilor C seven, Councilor Potty.
So, excuse me, on page two fifty-three, um, again, I think it's just a clerical error. Under Medicare insurance, FY twenty-four proposes a million seventy-nine, then below it says seven hundred and eighty thousand. It should be seven hundred and eighty thousand for those items.
So there was a tran- there was a transfer into, um, the Medicare-
Okay.
-insurance last year, because we had all the, we had retros, so that, now that revised, it was a revised number that increased.
Okay, so that, so that's correct then? 'Cause the math doesn't add up yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm s- yeah, I see what you're saying, the total line didn't go down.
Okay, so that's, should be seven hundred and eighty, or a million seventy-nine?
It's a million seventy-nine, I believe.
So then the, the line below it is incorrect, the total?
'Cause those are, you know, carried over as, like, hardcoded on.
Okay. All right, and then I just had another question, going back to, um, just as we wrap up here, on the assessments page, on two fifty-eight, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this. So the school department sent us a, um, a chart on the outgoing eighth graders going to high school. And I'm, I'm referring to the charter school sending tuition. So on FY twenty-five's budget, it's an increase of one point two million. Obviously, they haven't graduated yet, but is there an anticipation that more of our public school students are going to the charter next year? Which explains the increase, or?
So those, so those come right from the cherry sheet.
Okay.
And then what'll end up happening is throughout the year, that will get adjusted. So then, it was, if that goes down or up, then the revenue goes down or up. So the, that will keep, that will fluctuate, but again, we used what the, what's on the cherry sheet.
Gotcha.
So they're basing it off of, you know, the numbers that they had.
Are they anticipating an increase essentially? Is that how I read that?
That's how I would read it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I know that the tuition rate per child did increase.
Yeah, that, per pupil allocation, but it, it seems like the trend, at least in the past year, is that it actually went down from what we were sending from four public schools to the charter schools, so, but that's, I was just curious. So it really fluctuates essentially.
Yeah, and so like, I, you know, like-
Till October one.
So again, last year, till October one. So last year, that number was higher originally, and then when we closed out the year and got the final numbers to do the end-of-year report, which we do, you know, over the summer with the school department, that then changed.
Got it, thank you, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further questions? Further questions for the two, for pensions, Councilor C two, Councilor D M.
Yeah, I just had the one on the, uh, transfer to the Employer Trust Fund, the health, dental and life. That, that it's only increased by point seven percent, isn't that very low?
No, so, so the way, the way that, um, they used to do the insurance is they used to try to base it on claims and not actually build something in where you're building in, you know, a reserve, which we're self-insured. So what we've done is we've spent the last two years going back and forth with our health consultant, talking to the schools, and we're building it based on a working rate, which is best practice. So, you know, if they say that this is the amount for a family plan, which then builds in, um, like, all of your stop-loss insurance, it builds in all of those expenses, and then also, so that you're putting in a little bit extra, so that you can weather those storms of up and down. Unfortunately, um, because of the way it was being done and being based on claims, is what caused the net school spending to be down, was the health insurance, and then prior administrations were transferring money from the employer health trust fund to the schools to cover that difference. So we've changed the methodology as far as, like, how we're doing accounting for it, and we're trying to go forward with it. And we, we did, spent a lot of time on this, we also called many a communities, and we found one community that had done it that way. And when they were under state oversight, they changed it to using the working rate.
Okay, thank you, with that, I yield, that was the only question I had.
There be no further questions?
Motion to refer the municipal budget to full council?
Second.
Motion to refer the municipal budget to full council, has been made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Councilor C two, on the motion?
Yeah, I, um, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but we had this, I had brought up before about making a motion that we go line by line with the item. At the time, I had stated that we had gotten, when we had that debacle a couple of years back, uh, we had gotten an opinion from the Corporation Counsel on how to proceed. And, um, if anybody wants a copy, the clerk has copies for everybody of, of that opinion. But I think the most, th- this one here, if the City Council wishes to reduce the budget, what is the procedure? Under GLC forty-four thirty-two, any item in the mayor's proposed annual budget that the City Council has not voted within forty-five days of its receipt of the budget, to approve, reduce, or reject takes effect as the appropriation for that purpose for the fiscal year. Therefore, a vote proposing, purporting to reduce the entire budget or to reduce categories of spending by a total amount or percentage without actually voting to reduce particular line items by specific dollar amounts is ineffective. Without that specificity in individual line items, a City Council reduction in the budget would make all the appropriations ambiguous. The City Order would have no basis for deciding which line items should be reduced, and therefore no authority to refuse to pay bills from any of the line items on the grounds that they were incurred in excess of appropriation. If the City Council wishes to reduce the budget by a particular amount or percentage in total or for certain purposes, it must vote to reduce each and every applicable line item by specific dollar amounts as necessary to achieve that end. So I wanna be in compliance, I don't wanna get in the same situation we did a couple of years ago. So I would make a motion that we, that we-
What was the situation a couple of years ago, I don't-
We didn't do it within the forty-five days, we made a-
Oh, so the budget passed by default?
We made, we made a motion to reject the entire budget.
All right.
Uh, so, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
So I don't know if, if it would be applicable to make a motion to, when we do, do the budget tomorrow, that we do it line by line?
We'll do it line by line, Councilor, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You yield, Councilor, thank you. Councilor C six, Councilor Potty, did you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, a, a couple of things on the motion to refer to full council for action, um, which is what's on the floor right now. My, our colleague in seat two is, is, is accurate, in my opinion, with what she's saying. My, our colleague in seat two is accurate, in my opinion, with what she's saying. What happened years, a couple of years ago was the council rejected the municipal budget in the Committee on Finance and didn't act, and didn't refer the budget to the full council within its certain threshold, within its, within its, within its time. We didn't do that. So the budget passed. However, back in two thousand, I don't know, fourteen or so, when it, right around the time the charter changed, we got a legal opinion from Judge Macy at the time that the city council has the ability to take the appropriation order that is currently on, in our budget. And we can go through, if the council wanted to take mayor's office salaries, that's three hundred and ten thousand. If the council wanted to reject that to three hundred even, we have the ability to do that under the appropriation order. So I think tomorrow, when we have this in full council, if the council decides that they wanna reduce a line item in the appropriation order, they can do that. They can reduce, reject, or approve the appropriation line. So then the clerk essentially would read, for the purposes of general government, they would have that specific number and the council can approve it. Is that correct, through the president, through the clerk? Isn't that what we did last night?
The clerk will have to readjust the numbers to reflect what the council's vote would be.
Right, so the council, just for everybody's edification, the council will have to, if they wanna reduce, reject, or approve, to my colleague in seat two, we would do that within the appropriation order. I do got a question, though. There was some discussion tonight with law. Is there gonna be a plan to send a revised appropriation order down to this council for tomorrow? Or are we just gonna deal with it when we deal with it?
January maybe?
Yes, yes, they will bring down a revised appropriation.
They will send a revised appropriation order, okay.
I just wanna make one thing clear, too. When the council does reduce, reduce line item by line item, that reduce will come off the total of the entire budget as well. The clerk's gonna adjust those numbers to reflect what the reduction will be.
Yeah, right, Mr. President. So we just have four hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the annual budget? Four hundred, sorry.
That's a lot. That's not that much money.
Four hundred and twelve million dollars. Yeah, right? That, that is what, you know, if we decide to reduce it, we would do it then. Now, I remember, I was pretty avid for the prior, the Jay-Zole administration overestimating their revenues, if you recall, years ago. So I wanted to, at that time, reduce the revenue, but we can't essentially reduce the revenue. So we had to find, if it was a million dollars in revenue, we had to find a million dollars of expenses. And we went through that budget at that time and did that. So, I mean, whatever the will of the council's gonna be, if there's, if there's gonna be, I just wanted to make it clear that's what we will be doing. That's how we have to do it, if we want to do it. We can, we can adopt the whole, I believe, the whole appropriation order at once and not go through it. But if the council wants to reduce any line item, this is how we have to do it. So I just wanted to make that clear. I do have some concerns, but I'll reserve my comments on my concerns tomorrow. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor C. Five, Counselor Potty.
I just think that if there's any particular line item that a council wants to reduce, for whatever reason, go to that line item. If other line items are fine...
You gotta go down the list.
You can...
We've done it that way in the past.
But that's how we've done it in the past, too. Seems like sometimes things change with different administrations. But we've taken one line and saying, this department here, we think, needs to be reduced because of whatever. And maybe we can get a legal opinion from Attorney Ramsey. Before tomorrow.
Yeah, we even took muffin money out of the school department's budget ones.
The opinion I just read is his opinion. No, it's not, it's, let him speak.
Yeah, hold on one second. Attorney Ramsey, come down, just clarify. Because she did just read his legal opinion.
Right.
Tell the microphone, please, first, before you start. Speak into the microphone.
Corporation Council.
No, just speak into it.
There were two things that I just wanted to clarify. You could do it either way, the way Counselor Prayer or Counselor Dionne has suggested. You know, for efficiency, if you wanted to, I'm not doing it any way you want. But for efficiency, you could say, hey, let's look at these three or four line items, which I had a little question on. Reduce them or reject them, whatever you wanna do with it, and then say, then we approve the rest. That, that would be perfectly fine. And just the other thing I wanted to clarify, Counselor Potty, you do have the ability to reduce to the extent that it's not already a contractual obligation the city has. So, for example, I've had a contract for two and a half years. It's a three-year contract. You couldn't reduce my salary because it's in contract. But, for example, attorney for debt, which I'm asking to increases, that you could reject that one. So that's why I go on line by line. If you do intend to reduce, you wanna have that conversation to make sure that the administration will let you know, you know, these are the bare bones. You can't reduce below this level, but you can reduce to that level. Does that make sense? Am I not trying to explain that perfectly?
Can...
Hold on. Counselor C. Two, Counselor D. One, chiming.
I just have one question for clarification purposes. So I do have reductions I wanna make.
Okay.
My question is, I don't necessarily want to change the appropriation. So what I mean by that is, there's a couple of line items that I would reduce but want to put the money in the reserve fund. So in the event, down the road, something came up, then they would have, we would have the ability to transfer the money for another purpose. Can that be done?
No.
No, it's similar, it's different, but similar to, the council cannot add to a budget. So you would essentially be adding to a part of the budget that you wanna add to, and you can't do that. I mean, a simpler way to think of it...
But we just did it. We went from one oh two to one ten.
You're looking to increase the reserve fund. You can't do that.
Point of information, the reason why we're able to do that now is the, that's why I specifically asked the administration if they're gonna come down with an appropriation.
They're gonna make the changes tomorrow.
They're gonna make that change. Now, just for, as another point of information, I believe that if the council reduces a line and we can't reappropriate the money, it'll, it will flow through to free cash going into next year. That's what that will end up doing. We can't...
That's correct. Yep.
Can I just...
Okay, with that, I yield. Go ahead.
Just wanna make it clear, if you were to reduce the salary, you can't pick one specific salary and reduce it.